Yes, and we are up man, and we are up. Man in the wilderness. Right away now, now see my sister here, right, she's right here.
Greetings, everybody, greetings to Aunt Mama Angie and the family, and to everybody in the chat, a blessed Sunday evening. These are serious times.
Very serious times. Yeah, because some things are going on, you know, Jamaica turn upside down. And turn you. I I will start, because we have another thing before everybody, not to them signing, let me just show them. Walk one on Belmont Road, um, see line off here. We can see the car and everything line off, right, see them there, Belmont which is assigned that so by this, yeah, you see it, yes. So you see them line off, and then, you know, Auntie Andrew. When they reached there. Stand today, yes. So yeah, a lot of things are going up there now, you know, I'm gonna talk about another thing including the D P P. Because Jamaica not chaos right now, you know.
Yes.
Not chaos. And you, and you, and you, I I think you have the, um. You have the release from the opposition, right?
Uh huh, yes, I read that.
Yes, yes, we're gonna talk about that also, yes, and then we want, well, some other things you can talk about, so we're gonna talk about the D P P. And the band back a foolishness, cause she not inviting us, she had no more, she had no D P P now, then. Then my break the constitution and try pushing this lady, I don't know for what, others, well.
What?
Well, I wouldn't say we don't know, because we know sad for protect corruption, nothing else. No one never do that before, you know. We don't.
Uh huh, exactly, no, it is, it is a sad situation, it's a really sad situation.
Yes. It 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 really terrible, sister.
Yes, it's no joke, I mean, you know, from the other day, they have been saying a lot of things about never before, first time ever. And it it is not anything positive, it's just negative, and it has to do with the Andrew Wallace administration. It started with, remember with, um, him walking out of parliament, never before has this happened, you know. And then it it came with with with, um, that issue with the budget, never before has that ever happened. With the constitution and, um, issues going on, never before has that happened. So it's a lot of negative things that have never been done before, that this man has been doing and just violating the constitution. Left, right and center is like, nobody can talk to him, he's like he's his own law unto himself, so the country is being run by the J L P. Andrew Wallace laws and standards and whatever he feels like doing, and nobody can say anything to him. Who runs a country like that? How can a country run like that? When did he die and become, who made, who died and made, died and made Andrew Wallace God? That no, nobody, there's no correction, so anything that he is doing, he doesn't seek advice, he doesn't seek consultation. He just, it has, I don't recall any prime minister operating that way. When has this, when, when did this become a norm? When did this become a norm? Cause this is, this is sad, and to have the people in his cabinet not talking to him. Not correcting him and saying, no, 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 this is not how our country is supposed to run, this is not the traditions and norms that we're accustomed to. It's even worse, it's even worse, you know, and I don't want to go too much into some of the things before, um, Ratty and Herb sign on, so. I just give my general overview of how I feel about the whole situation, and I feel more for the Jamaican people. Locals in in the diaspora, we have to be concerned, we have to be worried. For the state of affairs of Jamaica right now, ne- we never, we never had the situation. And if he is violating the constitution that way, why, why do you think he's gonna respect the rights of the local, the regular people? Why do you think he's gonna respect the rights of the ghetto man, the ghetto youth, you know, poor people, he doesn't respect their rights. They 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 mean nothing to him, because if the constitution itself means nothing to him, why do you think the people mean anything to him? You know, it is, it is bad unfortunate.
Yes, man, Ratty, remember.
Rocky and Orange, no, Ratty. No, Ratty, who are you? Who are you?
Who I be?
Who are you?
Remember in the, in the, in the, in the protest, um, was a Friday.
Who are you?
Actually, who are you?
I can't hear you.
Exactly.
When I asked her, who is she?
Yeah, who is you, who is you?
But I I read something else aware, I I, you know, one down, down at the north coast, one of them place, one of them.
Give me, give me one second, one second.
Yes, man, yes. Yes, man, one of them quote down in the north coast, right, um, courthouse. It stopped proceeding, because she, well, you have some other, you know, other people represent, you know. And it it stopped it, it stopped it. And and and, right, so you know, so I stop it, let me just send this to Ratty same time. It it tell her stop it, because, you know, I mean, this woman are act illegally from September, you know.
Yeah, but but you know, something when, before you even go, before you even, you know, open up all of that. I have the quest, I have a question for Paula Nuland, have you no shame? You know, why she still, why she, why hasn't she just said, you know, something, I am, I'm I'm just gonna, I'm out of here. I'm not supposed to be here, I'm out of here, I'm done. But she's prolonging this by, and she knows better, she knows better, so she's prolonging this, believing that, okay. If she shows up tomorrow morning to her office, there are no, you know, nobody can do anything. And she's supposed to be upholding the constitution and the rule of law, and she's not doing that. So how then can she be prosecuting people because she has lost so much credibility? That she's, she's, she's redundant, if she showed up to work tomorrow, she's, she's redundant, she can do nothing. She can nothing, she can't be taken seriously, just can't be taken seriously, and it is sad that she has no shame. And has has chosen not to just walk away with whatever dignity she has left, but this is an embarrassment. I mean, major embarrassment, and to think, just for her to be prolonging it by behaving as if though, as though she's above the law. It it is really sad, it is, and this is, Andrew talk about wanting to, you know, worry about his legacy, this is his legacy. Yeah.
Ratty, well, I go on tomorrow now, because we not no code can keep on up tomorrow, man.
Well, like, like, um, like Mr. Wildman said yesterday. It's, it's problematic now, because you see the letter them send.
The one resignation letter?
No, the letters were the lawyers them sent to.
But we don't send anyone with the opposition leader call for shock and look at it, yeah, yes, yes, I look at it, turn your phone. Just whipping it to your seat, you can't read it tomorrow, and and remember you read it and make would I second, right?
Two of them, right?
Yeah, but if you open the top of any one of them, you're whipping.
You want this, the P, the media statement from the P N P?
Yeah, it's whipping the middle and read it, yeah, the bottom one.
Yeah, just, uh. It's a, uh. Yeah, it's a, the opposition People's National Party is issuing this urgent statement to the nation in light of the government's confused. Response to last Friday's constitutional court ruling, declaring that the legislation to extend tenure of the former D P P, Miss Paula Llewellyn. Beyond September twenty twenty three is unconstitutional and void. Our objective is to ensure that the nation avoids the impending constitutional crisis that could arise. Should there be no acting D P P in place by tomorrow morning, so this came out today. As our eminent legal representatives have pointed out with clarity in their urgent correspondence to the government's legal team yesterday. The continuation of Miss Llewellyn in her post beyond her lawful term is not only unconstitutional. But also a grave misstep in governance. A copy of their letter has been published with this release to underscore the severe implications of ignoring the court's ruling. If the government adamantly insists on the former D P P continuing to purport to hold that office. Her actions would not be violate, would not be validated by law, which would plunge the country into a deeper crisis. Furthermore, the current absence of a, I didn't even notice, the current absence of a public service commission. Whose term was negligently allowed to expire on March thirty first twenty twenty four without a new P S C being put in place. To ensure seamless public administration is a significant oversight by the government. That could hinder ongoing public services, including the critical appointment of an acting D P P. Finally, it is clear that the public statements made by the Attorney General, Dr. Derek McCoy. And the Minister of Justice, Honorable Delroy Chuck, in the wake of the court's decision. Represent either a profound misunderstanding or deliberate obfuscation of the law as expressed in the judgment of the Constitutional Court. Their, their actions have totally undermined their credibility as holders of those important offices. The P N P is therefore calling for the immediate resignations of both the Attorney General and the Minister of Justice. We urge the administration to consider the gravity of this situation and act in the best interest of Jamaica's democratic principles and legal statutes. Signed Mark Golden, leader of the opposition, and president of the P N P.
That's serious now, you know, so you said, hey, them, them dangerous, you know, that mean they make, the board.
Uh huh, right.
Um, for the, from the thirty first, they met that, they met that lapse, that mean them never have no intention to move this woman. You you said them out of order, or what kind of government is Ratty?
That's a problem, no.
So they don't want to take checks and balances, they don't want to take checks and balances.
Because here's the thing, the P S C, the Public Services Commission, they're the ones to appoint a deputy. And now they don't have a P S C, so who's gonna appoint a deputy?
And look now, it 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 does, they make it expire the thirty, remember March, March of Canada, you know. And them sit down there and make it expire, that mean them, like them say, yo, what work can I tease and keep that woman, you can't keep her. So yeah, yeah, shut down the court and everything, this is the government of Jamaica, this more than bad no Ratty.
You know what, I I I hope I can find it, um, the court decision, hold on a second, let me see if I can find it, because. We shouldn't overlook, we shouldn't overlook some of the things in the court decision, I don't know if you have it, can send it to me, but, uh, hold on. Yeah.
Bad man. It's bad, this is something.
This was damn bad, brother.
They make it, they make it, no man, it's it's terrible, it's terrible. Cool, this is, I'm gonna send me a bit right here.
Yes, uh. I look fit though, because there's something I wanna point out. Another court.
Tell me about, um, she may move up to much things one time, you know.
Right, 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 no, I look fit though, so.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, it really, it really terrible, right now them up there in a Ratty, and.
If you read the letter from, um, from Hilton Power, which is an opposition lawyer. You will see some of the information there as well, Ratty, again, I can't go on my system because I'm on my.
No, yeah, there's something, there's something that the court said, right, that, I don't hear a lot of people talking about it. It's not in that letter from the Hilton.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I'm looking for it here because, come on, I wish, but they, when I look for them thing, I can't find them. You don't find it yet? I don't know what. I mean, even have it top, you know. Use it, I never use it.
Okay, let me see this, okay, uh, let me see this, quote, but let me see, let me see, I copy this, I open it, yes.
And the court ruling that, right?
Yeah, yeah, but let me just send you this. Yeah, man, but can imagine them make that lapse, Ratty, that dangerous, see, and we never see that. That that terrible man, it terrible. The board was supposed to appoint them, they make, you know, that that expire shutdown like nothing. This we call bad man, this name overstepped them bound.
And it's like, I'm doing, and nobody not supposed to say anything. You know? You've, wait, 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 like this. No. Um, what on there? Ah, my, I've got one page this.
Even read from the page, Ratty, but open that to me, just send to you.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna say this, no, more, the, the, the thing itself. What on there, me have it, yeah, man, you have it, you know, cause I think I even, you send, you send it to me one at a time. They, um.
That's why me that try look back feed, cause through the thing them nothing, yes.
Yeah, you, you send it to me, yes, you you send it to me one at a time. Why is it to not look for them things, I can't find them? Ah, hold on, hold on, hold on, I know if I find it, you know if I find it. Know exactly where for finding it. But I got some. All right, hold on there, media statement, all right, see ya, no, 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 sorry, hate that. Oh, man. You have it, Maria?
No, the only one I have is from, is from the, is the gleaner one on, but they they put out.
Yeah, there is, there is one.
I don't have the other one. Oh, I think, and somebody just sent me something, hold on a second, yeah, that's the one I have, hold on a second.
All right, so, so.
But what, so in the meantime, why, why not read some, the, the, the one from, um, Hilton Powell, where, you know, where he was looking. He was taking issue with what the Attorney General, as well as the, um, Minister of Justice have been saying. About her appointment, you know, her appointment not being affected by the ruling. I'm coming.
Right now, people, let me just go on, we really want to look for that, let me just tell you this. So them up a Belmont Road right now, and me, yes, I'm looking thing I go on a Belmont Road, you know. And let me say, if I go to a record, or them want to work it out, so let me give you some little thing for them, so they might go on it up there. They might move Bug Life, because Bug Life, ah, after the, the young one, where they, and, and in a thirty years, or the first, they might lose. To the P N P that are the counselor up there, so they might move Bug Life, because them saying this, and they might move your best friend to in a Ratty. So we all look out for that, yeah, trendy, because she make, you know, like, she can't deal with the diaspora, so they might move her up. And I think they might move up there, they want to, because Sharon plays too dear, you know, um, you will matress. But the biggest person, the biggest, the biggest set of people them for move, them definitely realize, are the Prime Minister himself. Because him a draw down the party, and and on the joke, so if you not care where move, Ratty, if you have a hat pen with some Bernard. And they run out and buy two, you know, can't buy people to, you know, you know, a move like scavenger. And you go in a your pen, and you make a next pen over there, so you put couple of the same, and them over there, and they play, what different to make Ratty? Make any difference? If you story them, if you put somewhere on there, so I put some.
All right, I'll find it.
You find it, good.
Yeah, fine, just wanna read some to the people, because we we tend to overlook it and just go straight to the decision.
What you have it on, because I'm only see the one from the gleaner, what, where you have it on there?
I I want to send it to you, I want to send it to you.
Okay, no problem, cool, okay, okay, good, 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 yeah.
I'll send to you right now, hold on. I'll send it to you, I'll send some, uh, Maria. All right. But they have it now.
Yeah, get it back, yeah, me did have it, but let's send it to me, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think you send it to me.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I have it, yeah, I have it, some of them, I have it, before them full up, so.
All right, here, here, here this thing, and we're a lot of people, a lot of people skip over and and never even, them now focus on it. It says, this are the court, now, you know, this are the Constitutional Court, right? It says, it says on July twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, a bill to amend. The retirement ages of the D P P and the Auditor General was tabled in the House of Representatives. The bill was debated and passed in the house on twenty fifth of July, twenty twenty three. And in the Senate on the twentieth of July, twenty twenty three, by majority vote in both, oh, in both houses. Now, one of the things we have to keep in mind is, they might have a majority in the, in the, in the, uh. In the house, but in the Senate.
Yeah, yeah.
You you can't have a majority unless, unless the opposition party, the minority party, one person crossover.
Yes.
So you ask yourself the question, then, did the P N P, the opposition party, did they join with this? No, because some people did not travel, and then more, and then bring it at this time, so that they, them, them would, them wouldn't have the. The opposition to it, so then get the two thirds, because two, I think two people.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have your full house, fee, you can't stop them.
Right, as them couldn't get, them couldn't get, them couldn't get the two thirds vote in the Senate, them get it in the house, but them couldn't get in the Senate. And then bring it when they, they knew that two people were traveling, and the opposition said to them, no, wait, wait, and them said, no. So they move forward with it, all right?
So Ratty, don't move this, so when they move with it, at the same day, in the house, them rush it and pass it to. Yeah, and not talk to nobody, and then they rush to the Senate.
They rush it three days later.
Three days, you see that?
But no, but them knows the people, and they'd gone out of the country, and they know they never come back for a while, um, for like a week or so. Right, but you know what it says, so go on, I'll say. In January, all right, the, the, the D P P was born in nineteen sixty. In twenty twenty, the D P P attained a retirement age of sixty, as provided in the constitution, right, which means she have to go. All right, but in January of twenty twenty, right, she, she, that year, twenty twenty, she turned sixty, but before she turned sixty. The D P P expressed a desire for continuation in office, and she did it in writing. And the Prime Minister exercised his power under the, under the Constitution, section ninety six one B. And proposed an extension for the maximum permissible period of five years. So people, under the constitution, you're entitled to one extension once you get to sixty, cause sixty have to go. And but you have to apply for it before you reach a sixty at birthday, so she applied, and the Prime Minister said, and the extension we get is a maximum of five years. You can't get from one.
She did get.
All right, now get to that, yeah, so she, so the, the, the Prime Minister said, I want her to be extended for five years, right? The leader of the opposition at the time. Reject it.
Good.
He would, he, he just say, he responded two weeks later with unequivocal disagreement to the proposal. So I'm saying, no, we're not giving her five years, the Prime Minister then recommended to the Governor General that he permit the D P P. D P P standard to continue for three years, and not the five years that originally contem- contemplated, so I'm saying. The, the, the opposition said, no, not no five years, and the Prime Minister said, okay, all right, three years. Apparently, the, the opposition agreed to that, and said, all right, fine.
Watch it, then come on, come talk, cause they never want to.
Hold on, so what happened then, it looked like, based on what the court says, is that the opposition opposed it, them up, them, they opposed the five year. And then the Prime Minister said, okay, I'm gonna recommend three years, right? It doesn't seem this thing though, that, that, that the.
No, what it happened, come have the video, it's supposed, can't find the video, so. Andrew come out and start play some politics, and I said, they this and that and all kind of things, because of fi kind of style. When the opposition has said, no, she figure on, and them still push her to, them push her to.
Yeah, 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 but what I'm saying is that the court, you know, the court ruling, the court talked about the opposition opposing the five years.
Yes.
For the three years, they not mention nothing about the opposition.
Then I go back to them, Andrew does, but no, the opposition, I go for the three years.
Well then, well then, the, the Governor General, yeah, well, the Governor General had fall too, because.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, it can't just take one side, it's supposed to be an agreement between both sides, right?
Yes.
So, so what happened is that, I, you know, we feel about him already, people, you know.
Yes.
I don't know what feel about him, but anyway, so the Prime Minister recommended to the Governor General that he permit the D P Ps to continue for three years. The Governor General assented, assented, that's a term what them use to mean, agree, agree to it, cause nothing can't go through without him, right?
Yes.
And the D P P elected to continue in office, so this three year extension would have expired in September of last year. Remember she went, she went in twenty twenty, she got three years, supposed to end last year. Now, here is the key part, here's the key part we're a lot of people not paying attention to. In February twenty twenty three, the D P P made an application for continuation in office. Remember now, you know, she's supposed to finish in September twenty twenty three.
Yes.
But in February twenty twenty three, she said, I want to stay some more, I want to stay, I love this job, I want to stay some more time. And I'm saying, in a letter to the D P P in May, cause she applied to the, to the Public Services Commission. The Public Service Commission, so in a letter to the D P P in May twenty third, the Public Service Commission responded, stating that there could be. No further extension, as the tenure of the D P P had already been extended once.
Twice, you know, to the five, to the more, them, them, them said they not getting further, I remember.
Yeah, you can only get one extension, under the constitution, uh, so you, but the one extension could be up to five years. So then there are three, so when a three year period that come to an end, apply to the Public Service Commission and say, look, I want to spend some more time, I love this job here. And then right our back and say, no, you can't spend no more time, a one extension you allow down of the constitution, and you have to leave this year. So, the, the Public Service Commission wrote to her, responded stating that there could be no further extension, as the tenure of the D P P had already been extended once. Pursuant to the constitution.
What on the Ratty, don't move, don't move, we, we not miss this, so this happened February last year.
Yes.
You notice, that's why the government of Jamaica allow them to expire March the thirty first, two days ago. Hey, Ratty, where you at, that's why we can, well, well, put it to them, you know, that's why them allow it, because them want to get rid of them people, they too.
Here's what, here's what, this are the key sentence to me in all of this.
Yes.
It said the publics, after them write to her, them tell her, so no, you can't get another extension, you know, because there's only one you can get under the constitution. And you get it already, so you have to go. In the same letter, it says, the P S C, Public Service Commission, also. In the same letter, it says, the P S C, Public Service Commission, also told the D P P that the Prime Minister, having considered legal advice, had refused the extension. I wonder if you see, I wonder if you see what I'm putting on that. The Prime Minister said, no, no more extension for you, you know? Him say, him ask, and, and him get legal advice saying, no, 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 you can't get no, you can't get no more extension, right? Now listen to this. So then, what them do now, them go and pass the constitution, right? And then, I mean, they amend the constitution.
So let me face.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the Public Service recommended the appointment of, of the D P P to the Governor General, and then the Governor General therefore appointed her. So what happened is that, when she asked for this, you know, when she asked for this in February two thousand and twenty three, the Prime Minister said, no. So the question I have to ask is, then why did the Prime Minister come back and say, why did they then rush through it, and then come back and say, yeah?
Him flip flap. He just, remember, I had a Prime Minister this, you know, eh? Him said something to them by, a hour past, him flip it on. Remember my flip flop, I know? Remember, so them stay, you know, and no good.
Yeah, but, but, but here's the thing, but here's the thing, Ratty, again. On that point there with the Prime Minister, the justice minister came and rushed it through. Doesn't the Prime Minister have the ultimate authority to, to shut it all down?
Yes. Yes.
And he did not.
No, even though I'm telling them, say, even though, and listen to this. In February twenty three, when she wrote to them and said, I want a second extension, they wrote back to her in May. And when I wrote back to her, they said, listen, you are only allowed one extension under the constitution. And by the way, D P P, the Prime Minister went and he sought legal advice, and he also said, you should not be given this extension. And then all of a sudden, them go and they amend the constitution. So we don't understand that all the Prime Minister said, no, but then them go and them do this. Some cook up deal, some cook up, cook up.
Some people have started going prison in Ratty.
Some cook up thing though.
But you know why that can happen, Ratty, again, I wait, you know why that can happen? The Prime Minister doesn't have the gumption to say anything or to hold his cabinet accountable for the rule of law because he's so compromised. So whatever they want to do, he's in no position to counter that because he doesn't have the moral authority to do so. So that happens when a leader is compromised, and people can just run roughshod around him because he had the power to stand up and say, no, somebody else, if, um, she has to go and make a recommendation. The P S C would have made a recommendation for a new D P P to have been appointed. So he has, he's so compromised that nobody respects him.
What, Marion, Marion, and, and, and Ratty? Missy, I like a pattern here, where, you remember when the Ambossman comment about the one named Williams? When him right up the wall, and then, um, the National Security Minister go down there and say, I see nothing wrong with it. In a central Kingston, when the people them are dead. Remember the first time him winning up? Because running, running, running to it, they have that seat, P M P did have that seat, and the J L P win. And then him start going with some little things, and it caused some bloodshed, one bag of bloodshed. And you know, so the, um, the, the, the Ambossman come out, come talk, what them do, Ratty? Them get rid of her.
Them get rid of him, yeah. And now them want to put it in the office of the Electoral Commission.
And now them get rid of them people at all, because they know, you know, you know, you know, see the pattern. So when you, it's a pattern, brother.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I agree. But, but you know, what, but, 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 what we still are trying to juggle in my mind is, in May of twenty twenty three, in January, the D P P said, I want another extension. In May, the P S C wrote to her and said, listen, you can't get it because under the constitution, you can only get one, and this is, you, you get it already. And then say, and by the way, the Prime Minister sought legal advice, and him say, you not forget it. So what happened between May and the time when them passed the constitution that them cheat that? Why did the Prime Minister go, go back? Why did the Prime Minister, because look, you can't have no amendment without the Prime Minister getting involved in it? Because I see you're thinking that's not, I'm in the constitution.
Yes, yes.
Somebody that I sit down with him and said, no, we need her, we can't get rid of her, you mad? Right? And so, something, something happened there, because whenever I stick to him guns, then I say, no, 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 she get one already. So, well, so that was, um, let me see, that was May. That was February and May, right? So let me see when them change the constitution. All right. Look on the sequence of events now. February, she wrote to them, right? See, twenty twenty three, May, a few months later, them say, no extension for you, and the Prime Minister said, no extension for you. That I'm May, and July, they amend the constitution so she can get an extension. What happened between May and July?
Because remember, I'm just a flip, what I want to do, you know, is play for our conscience, which we know them, for them reverse psychology. So that him a play, because when him say something, you know? He not really mean that, when them sit down, you know, them sit down and them plan for them where, but not make him look bad. Boy, then put something, but he not mean it, because if he mean it, then put on film, but nothing can go through, you know? I matter fuck, I recommend her, she should stay in the first place, because she should just go both our business. All right, so Pike right, and Pike tell them about this thing. What she do? She said the woman bad mind. And, and she bitter, long time the woman bitter. Eh? Why she say Pike bitter? It's a, it's a, it's a deputy, D P P. She said the woman bitter, I'm bully. Said the woman a bully.
I'm gonna do my research. Yeah. No, I'm gonna do my research from Pike, and I tell her, say, right now, Pike would be the fittest person to take over the office, but the problem is you don't have a P S C for appoint Pike.
Because them get rid of the P S C to get the same.
Yeah, Pike or, or Jeremy Taylor.
What's up tomorrow? What's up tomorrow?
Yeah, Ratty, they might get rid of the P S C, this is what them do, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
The country not termite.
Yeah.
What's up tomorrow?
Pike or Jeremy Taylor.
Yeah, what's up tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Well, she's just, but can, can you imagine, but just imagine this for a second.
No, but one second, one second.
That she just, she show up.
Do you know why I wouldn't go for Jeremy Taylor?
Right.
He is a man, he is a man who prosecute the, the, the Vibes Cartel case, you know? So he knew, and he knew about, he knew about the.
You about the tainted juror.
Oh, of course he knew about it, because remember, no, no. When I say him know about it, I don't see naming of the transcript, but remember, no, no, them did get rid of one juror, you know? They get rid of the, a lady who went to visit her son who was in prison, and her, and, and, and couple of the defendants, one or more of the defendants in the Vibes Cartel case, approached him. And, and said to him, say, hey, you mother that, and things like, so I'm telling mother, because they knew that she was on, somehow they knew she was on the jury. So the woman went and said, watcha? Me not really want getting off for another trial, eh? I'm fearful for my life, whatever, although no threat was made against her. So them excuse her, right? Then the same man who bribed the people, him end up in one of the lawyers' chambers. And, and them tell the judge, and them still keep him on.
Allowed to continue.
Yeah.
And that was sixty days. It should have been a mistrial, and you go over back with a trial, it's simple.
Right.
No, the, the lady, the, 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 Miss Pike, I think, I don't know, but I think Miss Pike, I've never met her, but I think Miss Pike, based on everything I've read, this lady have gumption, this lady is a stand-up lady, this lady fight truth and right and justice. If anybody disbelieve me, go read the letter where she write.
I read it, I read it. But Ratty, let me tell you something, now, you see, Ron, yes, so, when we talking to them, listen, and when we go to about, Cassie, now, of course, everyone, Ruwan James, I'm supposed to be the commission, them do everything for fight him, you know? So we got some fight now, can imagine them start fight Pike. And then, then, then say, he, I fight them hard, all right, no go fight Pike, because I said them stay.
But here's the thing, here's the thing, here's the thing. True betold, though, that she's, she's, she's more than qualified for this position.
That's true.
To run the office. I think she will bring a sense of decorum and odd and professional, uh, um, uh, professional, uh, air to the, to the, to the, um, to the office. She'll restore confidence in the office, because right now, nobody not have no confidence in the D P P office, you know? Nobody not have confidence, you know?
No, and it, and just, just imagine she, right, and just imagine she under this clothed, with the, what, what was, what happened with the, with the constitutional court ruling, what is her unconstitutional? And imagine her just showing up tomorrow morning at her office. I, I wonder if she'd have the gumption to do that. I wonder if she had the gumption. But another thing that crossed my mind, you see, Ratty, and as you were reading, is that she wrote a letter asking for an extension in February. Now, she's supposed to be a creature of the constitution, as I like to say, these people are creatures of the constitution. But wouldn't she have known that the framers of the constitution did not empower her as a public servant, servant, to decide on the terms and conditions of, as, as stated in, um, Hilton Powell's letter, that she don't get to decide the terms and conditions of her tenure as well as when she retire? And I'm thinking to myself, you know, I, I, I was, I said to Wayne on Fantastic Five earlier, that the justice minister, the attorney general, the prime minister, um, the D P P, they all took an oath to uphold the constitution. Now, they are lawmakers, but these people are the chief lawbreakers. Then how then can they hold the rest of society accountable when they are breaking the law left, right, and center in front of the faces of Jamaicans? So when the Prime Minister comes and say harsh punish, harsher penalties, to whom? For whom? Because there are being some egregious things and getting away with it, and no one wants to hold them accountable. So I would like to know from them now, how are they going to square this one away? Because they're supposed, the constitution supposedly i- is really the, um, the supreme law of the land, but it's like, Andrew Holness, that administration is their own law. Screw the constitution, we're going to do whatever we want to do, and dare anybody to.
Ratty, let me remind you of something now, with Chuck. You remember when them write the, the pre-sign letter? Nothing that say Andrew Holness resign.
Yes.
I, let me, let me just show you back, let me just show the people them back this, right? Let me just show them back, now show him himself, and him say, man, I run out now, right, um, Chuck. Let me just get Chuck, yeah. Because Chuck write this letter, Chuck. All right, no go give them something with Chuck now. That Chuck dangerous, you know? Yes, is that Chuck? All right. Look, look on this, now, play this one first, Delroy Chuck. Look on this one. Look on this, Ratty.
An unjustice, Delroy Chuck, who has voiced strong opposition to the party leader's decision to appeal the Constitutional Court's ruling, resigned from his position on Wednesday. Mister Samos, who states that he agrees with Delroy Chuck's resignation following the ruling, also says he's in support of calls by Arthur Williams and Delroy Chuck for the leader of the opposition to resign.
I can't disagree with that, you know, because it, it is how the system works. If you have been brought in a certain light, then you need to tend your resignation. He can do that. It will be for the party, and I would just say, listen, not resigning all of this, he wish to reelect you. And then he will get, as it were, a new mandate, which he could take with him and continue.
You hear that? I may not play something else, Ratty. I may not send this, come here. I may not show you what they write, Chuck, so what I may not send this, come give you. Ratty, let me see this. All right. So me send it to you, eh? I think, Marry, I may send it to you before. All right, so me send that to you.
Yes, we narrated earlier.
All right. Ratty, me just send that to you, right? And now, now play another one, and then you, may I make you just read part of that, read part of that, right? Um, Marry, I read it earlier. Chuck, let me just go back to Chuck, right, so, Delroy Chuck. All right, hear this again now, hear this now.
Officially welcomed Senators Doctor Christopher Tufton and Arthur Williams on Friday. Both men have had a turbulent ride in regaining their seats in the upper house, but it seems that things have been put to rest. More of this report from Candice Ming.
Warm welcome for ousted Senators Doctor Christopher Tufton and Arthur Williams to the upper house on Friday. Both opposition senators were embroiled in a legal tussle to reclaim their positions in the upper house. But on Friday, both men returned to the Senate vindicated following Wednesday's decision by the Court of Appeal that their removal was indeed unconstitutional. The Court of Appeal upheld the Constitutional Court's ruling that the removal of Mister Williams and Tufton from the Senate in November twenty thirteen was null and void. Opposition leader Andrew Holness had used pre-signed, undated resignation letters to boot them from their posts. On February sixth, the Constitutional Court ruled that Mister Holness's actions were unlawful, contrary to public policy, and in breach of the constitution. Still not satisfied, the opposition leader appealed the ruling. That request would be thrown out by the appellate court on March twenty five, paving the way for Doctor Tufton and Mister Williams' official return to the Senate. Justice Minister Senator Mark Golding expressed relief that the ambiguity surrounding the issue has been cleared up. He described the scenario as unprecedented and dangerous.
I also wish to state for the record that we too, on this side, are relieved and thankful that the frankly dangerous unconstitutional escapade that led to their unlawful exclusion from their seats in the Senate has now been put to its quiet sense.
Senator Golding also had high praises for the judiciary. He says the judgments were delivered in a timely manner.
Both the judges of the Constitutional Court and the Court of Appeal for duly playing what may be regarded as their most important constitutional role arising from the separation of powers that underlies our governmental system. And not only that, but doing so with manifest judicial dexterity, appropriate circumspection, and indeed mature sensitivity to depressing national interests. This is indeed, Mister President, a moment to celebrate our nation's judiciary.
Meanwhile, leader of opposition business in the Senate, Tom Tavares Finson, welcomed his colleagues.
I'm sure that both will take up where they left off in contributing to the integrity of the debate in this chamber. And perhaps now that Mister Williams is here, I will not hear the continuous refrain that says, if Arthur was here, I couldn't do this or that.
For his part, Senator Williams wasn't prepared to say much.
Thank you, Minister of Justice and acting leader of government business and the leader of opposition business, for your welcome. And that is all I propose to do today. There are other occasions to say other things. I thank you.
But Doctor Tufton says he regretted how things unfolded.
This should be a learning experience for all of us. And I too want to publicly say, and certainly in this house, to the extent to which I may have contributed to the process that has led or led to the conclusion that we have had to depend on the courts to resolve. It is regrettable, and I certainly am sorry for that. I think it will certainly represent one of the experiences in my own political life that I will always regret.
Candice Ming for.
So, all right, so Ratty. Ratty? Yes, man. So me send something to you now, just read what Chuck himself. When, if him not, him not tell the opposition leader, them say him to resign. So why Chuck not do the right thing, and him resign now? Just read that from me, just send you.
Well, uh.
That was Delroy Chuck.
Oh, the one, yes, and it was a pressure mounted?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. It's a Chuck requests urgent meeting of opposition MPs. Pressure mounted yesterday on opposition leader Andrew Holness to resign when senior Jamaica Labour Party parliamentarian Delroy Chuck requested an urgent meeting of the party's MPs to discuss last Friday's Constitutional Court declaration in the Senate resignation letter saga. Chuck, who just over a week ago was appointed the party's spokesman on justice and was asked to shadow the Attorney General portfolio, made the meeting request in a letter to Derek Smith, the leader of opposition business in the House of Representatives. He also copied the letter to all opposition MPs. Chuck said that after reading the judgments in the case, he believed, quote, "The matter to be of urgent national importance," end of quote, and as such was urging his parliamentary, his parliamentary colleagues to read them. There's a part that's, that's cut off of the letter. It says, "Any constitutional office holder, be it Prime Minister, lead of the opposition, Speaker of the House, Chief Justice, or others, who the court rules or declares to act unlawfully and unconstitutionally, would be obliged, in all good conscience and honor, to tender his or her resignation unless there are good and compelling reasons not to do so," Chuck said. Quote, "I asked." Quote, "I ask that you call an urgent meeting of all opposition MPs to consider the matter," end of quote, he added. On Friday, the Constitutional Court comprising justices Courtney Day, Marva McDonald Bishop and David Batte declared unanimously that Holness's request for pre-signed and undated resignation letters from persons to be appointed opposition senators and his use of those letters to oust Arthur Williams and Doctor Christopher Tufton were, quote, "inconsistent with the Constitution, contrary to public policy, unlawful and accordingly null and void."
Okay, so Chuck in a coffee, Mr. Nissan, so Chuck, what Chuck for do the right thing now too?
For resign.
Yeah, but as you're reading that, remember now, this is the same Prime Minister who wanted the Chief Justice to act. And they had to tell him, no, that's not how it goes. You have to appoint, he has to be appointed. Because in according to the Prime, what the Prime Minister said, he's watching him. And I'm thinking to myself, who is Andrew Holness? Because he's doing some things that have never been done in Jamaican politics and governance that has tarnished the reputation and has put a dent in democracy as we know it in Jamaica.
So, Ratty. Look, you know, I'm looking at.
Yes.
Now look on, now look on, oh, section one twenty seven of the Constitution. Um, and it talks about um one twenty five. And one, that's appointment of public officers. And one twenty seven, delegation of functions of public service commission. And apparently, you have to have the Public Service Commission who's acting on behalf of the Governor General. They have to be in the mix. So if we don't have one now, and I'm hearing now that he's going to appoint somebody tomorrow morning. Does it mean that he's going to seat a public service commission now? And then have them do all this tomo- I I don't know how this is going to be done by between tonight.
Them should even expire, it should even leave to run out and expire. Because of some bad belly, maybe just talk to them in African language, Ratty. You see, when you not do what them want you for doing now, them get to either this kind of way now. Because that Public Service Commission should not allow to expire. That you have got put up one now and get the people them free. Like him, I say, I fire them in another way here. Because I can't fire them that way, they make it no way. Make that expire and then we got to some other one. Or we not remove or because everything good. You know, since they come to that running, Ratty?
No, I don't know how they're going to do this. All over your top, I don't know them going to do it unless there's another section that I'm not aware of. But it says that the public service commission is three to five, not not less than three and no more than five members. So you can have three, between three and five, right?
Yes.
And the, 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 the persons, they have to be recommended by the Prime Minister after the Prime Minister has consulted with the leader of the opposition.
Yes.
So I don't know how they're going to all of this now, pick three people between tonight and tomorrow morning. And then have the, have consultation, an agreement, and then go to the Governor General and then have him seat these people and then have them go ahead now and appoint the deputy. I, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how this going happen. Now, here's something, here's something. And I don't bit to me, I don't mean to be mischievous. But if, what I, if Lonsom, if Lonsom was the leader of the opposition, here's what I think would happen. Lonsom wouldn't go through with the consultation at all. Lonsom would have made the thing going to chaos, Lonsom would have said.
No, but Ratty, that's a, that's a, we not better going on politics because of that we not definitely do. No, Ratty have the soft heart, you know, Ratty that's. Come from tonight.
Yeah, but, 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 Ratty, good point you made, you know, that's a good point you made. But remember now that, remember that the government, you know, have been disrespecting the opposition and not consulting them on matters that they should be consulting them on for a very long time. So Mark Golding does have the authority now to say, no, 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 you're not going to rush me through this. Because this should have been done a long time ago. So we're going to slow walk this, walk you like a dog, and we're going to do this thing, you know, how it's supposed to be, because then if you do it that way, you put anybody there.
It says, well, we have to know, right? We can't hold grudges, right? We shouldn't hold grudges, and we should remember them things. You know, you know, Lonsom would have said, you know, Lonsom would have said, but wait a minute. When you change the Constitution and never consult with it, we never have no debate. And now no one come and tell me, say, me must consult to know, so I can't put a, 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 a team in place for a G U N or a D P P. No, make the court system mash up.
Yeah, man, that's true. That's true, Ratty. No, man, no, because, Ratty. Well, I know. Remember the opposition said, right, the Prime Minister, he not answer him, you know?
He don't answer him.
He not come and call me from here, the opposition now. Can I just cut the ten and say, well, I, this is yeah, my car.
But hold on a second. But hold on now, we don't want to plunge the country in that darkness as far as. Twenty-four one week.
No, but, 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 Ratty, Ratty, Ratty. It is, I don't think it is turning the country into, um, a crisis. It is, the government have brought the project to the state, to the state right now, the government. And so they must be walked like a dog and shamed. And shamed, because they have been doing this for too long. Remember the S O E, the Constitution, the, the court said they were unconstitutional. Didn't he continue doing them? So he has no respect for the Constitution. So he, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, yeah, go ahead.
I read it, so the, yeah, right, section one twenty four, it says, "There shall be a Public Service Commission for Jamaica consisting of a chairman and such number of other members, being not less than three, nor more than five, as the Governor General, acting on the recommendation of the Prime Minister, after consultation with the leader of the opposition made from time to time decide." That's section one. Section two says, "The members of the Public Service Commission shall be appointed by the Governor General, acting on the recommendation of the Prime Minister, after consultation with the leader of the opposition by instrument under the broad seal." So none of this can happen unless the two, the two, the two men and there's the two of them meet and talk about it. So if Lonsom was one of it, it was, Lonsom would have make himself unavailable. He would have said, no, I can't consult with you right now, protect my wife, have some things planned for me and we family, we have a family, we have to go. We can't talk about, I say, I've been backing about a week.
Ratty, gun. In, in, in a way, you know, wink, wink, you're sending, you're sending a message to the opposition leader, you know? You are sending a message to the opposition leader, okay? And I know that somebody is watching, somebody is watching. Yeah, because they, she shouldn't allow the premise of rushing through anything because they have to make sure people are vetted for the position and the thing is done in the proper way. So no, there's no rushing this, no. Take.
No, no, this is not my, this is, my, this is, you know what? They just are the country, let's get together and think by our whole hand and just get this thing going and get it done.
In the interest of the country, in the interest of the country.
In the, 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 in the darkness.
Hey, you know, see something I think to them.
Yeah, you, you see, right?
This was fired.
Eh? Yeah, they might move Bug Life, you know, and they might move your friend. And they might move, um, you with mattress. Because them say Bug Life make them lose up the center of the thing. Them say Bug Life, them make them lose their place and him can't talk to nobody and him no friend. So they might have moved, they might put, um, the, 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 the axling from up a big mama. And him, they might put in a desk, but me and him, because him spread propaganda too. And then, um, you have friends because your friend out in the diaspora can't control because she and them, she can't be friend. So they might try to store on some things. And then we are move you with too. Because they can't, she does a rent place, four point three million, one bag of money all over the place, and she not take it over here. So they have a couple of them, but they might move. Yeah, but the, the biggest one for moving Andrew only is Elijah Clark. Because really, they might draw down the thing. If, and, um, Ratty, the amount of thing you see me play with the people them right cross the length and width of Jamaica, who them are this? Not the Prime Minister.
Andrew is a problem, Andrew is a major liability, yeah, yeah.
So when you might go on and I move, move on and move himself. He might be a failure, brother. He might be a failure.
I am seeing, I am, I hope it is true, but I'm seeing here in the chat that Floyd Green, Nestor Morgan and Nigel Clark have been fi- have been fired. That can't be true, Nigel Clark. I would more believe Nestor Morgan. But I need to, um, should they? Yeah, get some confirmation on that win because.
No, we can't tell the Prime Minister, man, you have to fire yourself too, you know? You can't even fire yourself.
Yeah, but he's, no, he's a major liability. He's the one who's ruling down the party, yes, he's, he's the one weighing down the party. Not that any of his cabinet members are any better, but he himself is a major liability. He and his wife are liabilities, yes. They are carrying on the party.
Yeah. Yeah. You understand, Bug Life, that one, because Bug Life, they have a mixed mess wrong with people like me and Ratty, the man. Who are, who are not talking about the lie committed to and telling them about corruption and full of corruption. You understand, me tell them, say them want, them want him, them blame him.
Andrew is a problem, yes. Andrew, Andrew is a major liability. Yeah, because if he was campaigning, I never heard of a Prime Minister campaigning two o'clock at night for an election. And, and not even general, local government election, still lose the election.
We just get something, so Maria, we just get something from it. Yeah, we just get a speech with the opposition, you know, so now play it, well, I.
National Party is issuing this urgent statement to the nation in light of the government's confused response to last Friday's Constitutional Court ruling which declared that the legislation to extend the tenure of the former D P P beyond September twenty-three last year is unconstitutional and void. Our objective is to ensure that the nation avoids the impending constitutional crisis that could arise should there be no acting D P P in place by tomorrow morning. As our eminent legal representatives have pointed out with clarity in their urgent correspondence to the government's legal team yesterday, the continuation of Ms. Llewellyn in her post beyond her lawful term is not only unconstitutional, but is also a grave misstep in governance. A copy of their letter has been published with our release to the media this afternoon to underscore the severe implications of ignoring the court's ruling. If the government adamantly insists on the former D P P continuing to purport to hold that office, her actions would no longer be validated by law and it could plunge the country into an even deeper crisis. Furthermore, the current absence of a Public Service Commission whose term was negligently allowed to expire on the thirty-first of March this year without a new commission being put in place to ensure seamless public administration is a significant oversight by the government that could hinder ongoing public services, including the critical appointment of an acting D P P. Finally, it is clear that the public statements of the Attorney General, Doctor Derek McCoy and the Minister of Justice, the Honorable Delroy Chuck, in the wake of the Constitutional Court's decision represent either a profound misunderstanding or a deliberate obfuscation of the law as expressed in the judgment of the Constitutional Court. Their actions have fatally undermined their credibility as holders of those important offices. Accordingly, the People's National Party is calling for their immediate resignations as Attorney General and Minister of Justice respectively. We urge this administration to consider the gravity of this situation and to act in the best interests of Jamaica's democratic principles and good governance.
Right, there we have it, Ratty.
Let me, let me read this there, somebody just sent me something, come out of the Attorney General's chambers today. It says, "Due to the ambiguity and the consequent uncertainty arising from the full court's judgment in Paulwell and Bunting versus the Attorney General, the Director of Public Prosecutions, D P P, has advised that she's unable to carry out the functions of her office at this time. In accordance with section ninety-six, subsection three of the Constitution, the Public Service Commission will be invited to appoint a qualified person to act in the role of Director of Public Prosecutions for the time being. After careful consideration of the judgment and in the public interest, the Attorney General will be appealing the full court's decision immediately to have the issues resolved and determined by the Court of Appeal." So this would seem to suggest that they have, uh, a public service commission. I don't know if they have one or not, because this, based on what Mark Golding just said, it sounds like there isn't one. Based on this, it sounds like there is one, so we don't, we don't know. We'll have to wait and see.
I mean, I'll take it from them, you know, because all the time them check something and it always wrong.
Nah, man, you just no agree to nothing with them.
Them flip-flop too much, me not make them leave me, I fear push me when I go later. And I press them, them dangerous, Ratty. When them dangerous, so you know, you know, you know, you can't trust them, you know, you not trust dangerous people, brother. You not trust dangerous people, man, very dangerous too.
Man said, no, it would, he would be unavailable, Lonsom would be unavailable to have any consultation with the Prime Minister regarding the replacement of the D P P. And would have gone for a month.
About three months. You see, some of my man, Jimmy, I pay, pay them the money, you know? You come now, me not talk to them neither, make them go about them business, man. Them and the people them go work it out. Yeah, man. Tell me I write him, and he not answer me, I say, no, sir. No, I'm not time for him, not at all. Ratty, all right, look on this now, remember the, um, National Water Commission, now come back on this, you know? Remember the National Water Commission said they never have no pipe for run and all kind of thing. That's what the minister and the one of them are run out and say, right? Now, we say not June, Ratty, can you know, say, we are the win, right? And I assure you, the amount of acres of pipe and black tank for them have, Ratty, look here. And, and, and Jamaica must have water, just look on this, Ratty, look here, look on this. Overhead, a black tank, then they know, by the thousands. And then right there, I buy them stack up more than ten feet up in the air. So they have the pipe and they have a black tank, no, I assure you. Water Commission think this in a Ratty. Now, I assure them, say them can't hide nothing from me, you know? Yes. Look.
I understand.
Look, well, I, yeah, man, we use everything on them, and see that? Them, them there alone are ten feet high. Pipe dead if we run. We should not have that water, see there? You see, pipe, Ratty? Look there. Look there, Ratty. But they must say they not have none and they, they, they not go so, I lie, they might tell. This a for them place, not the commission place.
No, man, and, and Jamaica, that, the factory over in Ecuador, that, the factory in Ecuador. No, because, listen, them say they not have none of them thing there, so it can't be Jamaica. No, we don't see, no, that, that picture there from some foreign country, Ecuador.
See there? Now, may I, may I, may I run it over them place, make them see it?
Oh, that look like Costa Rica, man.
Costa Rica, them, them see a way, you know? The man say, yes, see that, the, the, the one, one, man in the wilderness, so where about the two with the war? See there? Here, cause of, them have them, man, not no go so. Them have them, see, see them, see there? Yeah, man. So them can't give me no talk, see them there? Them there, each of them pile start, they are like ten feet high up in the air or higher. And so them pack them up, but them not today. Them just now did them work, see them there? Send Joan go deal with it to the Ratty. Now, when they might tell me, so no, Ratty, see there? Now, make them see them one place. Yes. So what they might tell me, so no, it's a black tank there now. Them there a black tank, you know? Now, what they might tell me, so no, Ratty?
That's him.
Eh?
Is that him?
This, oh, they lie all the time, that's why me not listen to them. Because them flip-flop all the time. And them dangerous. That dangerous. Yeah? So, um, the water crisis, well, the master Jamaica, I wouldn't really have no boat, no water crisis, or them manage the thing and them should, them should, you know, leave the water business long time better than this, you know? Water run out to the sea. Some people have had to see water, turn their drinking water. We have water, we waste. This bad. Yeah? Yeah, man, that disgrace, man. That disgrace. So this how we do to them. Anytime, anytime them come tell, well, I know, we embarrass them. And we show them, say, hey, don't come on and tell me no lying, you know, because we have Joan and all kind of things, you know, where I look down, you know, on a place and where I, I, I put it up. Where I embarrass them. Yeah? No to worry about it. You understand? No to worry about it. So, Ratty, what we expect tomorrow now from them people like we under the pressure, that mean no quote now run tomorrow there?
Well, if the, if, what? Somebody said Montague resign? I don't know if that's true, but here's the thing.
Let me go out, man, I find out some things. I find out some things. Go out there, I find out some things now.
Yeah, what happened is, uh, tomorrow, what's gonna happen tomorrow? That's a very good question. It's a very good question. Who knows? Nobody knows.
Yeah, because.
Let me ask you a question, sis. What, let me ask you, um, let me ask you, uh, uh, um, as, as. It's a foolish question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. What if the, what if the Minister of Information had said, "I'm not resigning"?
Bog life, if him say not resigning?
Yes.
He would have been fired.
Tell you not to that.
I mean, can't tell nobody that.
No, man, no. Can't tell nobody, Bog life now, now.
What is, what is that? The, the, um, saying that they resigning is quote unquote resign.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
It's either resign or again fine.
He, he, he didn't have a choice. He didn't have a choice. You know, and it is a sad state of affairs where the, the, the Prime Minister is really, um, walking on his, his knee and nubs, you know, because he, he has no credibility. And so all the people in the cabinet can really run rough side around him because he can't talk to them. They, they can't talk to Nestor because, you know, Nestor look like a little dibbly dibbly butt. All others that are giving him trouble. What can he do about them? Nothing. Because he is a real problem.
Yeah, Kishendom, Mr. Sam Khan. Early this week, yes, sir. Yeah, them just say early this week, but if you don't have the, the Public Service Commission, I don't know who's gonna do the recommendation.
I doubt again, because this, we should in at this dilemma.
Right, right, um, Kishendos, yeah, I'm gone, yeah, Mr. Khan, can, can the Max ask what's the position with the suit against him? It's, it's, it's ongoing. It's ongoing. It's not going anywhere. It's ongoing.
I'm just finding out something there. I'm just mute, yeah?
Well, you know, you know, the question as to the act, how, how, how did we get here in a Ratty done? Because so many missteps were made along the way and the Prime Minister was never held accountable and forced to follow, you know, to do things, because we look at the SOE and though the, the court ruled that the SOEs were unconstitutional, he kept doing them anyway. Kept doing them anyway. So, you know, you have to ask the question, what kind of a leader is he really? Because we never had this kind, this, this kind of, this, this, a Prime Minister in Jamaica operate with such want and disregard for the very constitution he's supposed to be upholding. And it is very, it is a very sad situation and a very sad state of affairs for Jamaica right now.
It's, it's, my mother said, they say they will appoint the Public Service Commission tomorrow, but they, they, they don't appoint the, um, it's, it's done with the Governor General. And just so you know, my mother, uh, it has to be directly, it's done by the Governor General, but it can only be done when you have consultation between the Prime Minister and leader of the opposition. The, the Prime Minister cannot on his own, unilaterally says, here are the names and have the Governor General. There must be consultation. So if there's no consultation, um, you have another problem. Another problem. Oh, make sure him pay and not the government. Well, actually, we're asking both of them to pay. So maybe, look, I don't, I don't want so much more about it, but, you know, the government was sued and the former minister, as I can safely say, former minister was sued as well.
You know, something else I recommend, when I'm thinking about this, you see, is that the government, knowing that this case was coming up, did not make any preparation in, say, you know, say, what if the court ruled, that, no, we know it wasn't unconstitutional, but they, they did not make any preparations to say, what if the government, the Constitutional Court come back and say this unconstitutional? What do we do then? So there were no preparations made for this kind of outcome. So they assumed that it would, you know, they would, they would have won anyway. So it is sad that they, you know, this country is running in this way like, like a banana republic.
Right.
I'm showing you something now. Remember, when tell the, said I'm a kick that one up to the curve, so I'm gonna show you now. So that one now, this is Bog Life, everyone come, well, you know, him call my name, I call Ratty, him put up thing with me, then put up thing with Ratty too, you know. Alright, then so then kick, him say resign, you know, you know, Andrew, him not the brother say fire, you know, because him want them fit. Resign, where to resign for? Because them kick him to the curve. So Bog Life get kicked to the curve, see there? Wanna see it? So him say, him, him resign before, wow, wow, the way that resign for. Now, tell you, so them say big worthless, him bigger worthless because him make the young man, when they marry, walk away and win that seat and nobody not chat to him up there, come a liability. So them have a flinging back, make him go, turn Willie Blinkie somewhere, come above. So them figure him out. But they, they, remember him, him have lawsuit still pending, you know. Well, Ratty, that me, Ratty. So, yeah, this good thing, we can't make a call my name, you know. I would could I give my lawsuit.
You're right, you're right. You did call up my name, yeah.
Yes. So, right, yeah, man. And I miss it, who, who they have, so now. Alright, so me have the gardeners thing. See there? Oh, me have something, me have something, you know, say, let me get some little things, let me, let me say something.
But Ratty Khan. Sides, okay? She's. Just attorney general. Right, all on one second there we. Say Paula Lu will decide that, okay, gonna resign, just, you know, and then Attorney General who says she's going to appeal this. What does, how does that affect this, you know? How does that work in this situation if she chooses to walk away and then he's still going to appeal this?
Yeah, that, that wouldn't make any sense. Done, then that's it. It wouldn't, it, it just wouldn't make any sense. I, I, I mean, he could appeal for, for clar- because they're saying it's ambiguous right now. So they could appeal to say, look, look, we need to make it clear. But it's clear already that she, incumbent, is not entitled to a second extension. Now, somebody who's coming on board knew they would be, the, the amendment would apply to them, but it wouldn't apply to her because she already do her time already. So I was asking, I was asking, um, uh, Mr. Wildman last night, whether or not they, they could say, okay, you know what, she'll, she'll walk away now, and then they turn around and say, okay, we're gonna appoint her and make her DPP again. And he said, no, that wouldn't work either. You know, because you, even though it's silent on it, the impression is that you only get to be Attorney General once and you get one extension. You don't get to come back twice, you know. Come back another time. Right, you do one and then that's it. So, it, the new, the new, the, the new Attorney General, sorry, the new, uh, DPP, I think they go up to, uh, age sixty-five or seventy. They've increased it. So somebody coming in new.
And you can't get the extension, yes.
Yeah, somebody new, but not, 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 not the, no. But you know, the good thing is, I mean, she not having a pride or anything like that. I mean, her reputation completely tarnished right now and she'll fight still, you know. Instead she come out and say, listen, you know what, the court has spoken and I respect the decision of the judge and I'm going, of the court and I'm going home. Just go home.
Yeah, yeah, that's what my belief is to some people. Sometimes if you have a very good partner, you know, your little come on like husband or your husband, they can go home to you. Or a little cat or something, because you don't go home and feel good, you know, but you know, you know, want this. And your husband, that's, you know, they leave this alone. But when you go doing this and sometime, you're, you're old enough and when you look at escort, you only class card, if you have buy and use. Them thing, I bother you, you go home and you loan there, you have to go buy escort. And them thing, I watch the place, brother. You understand? Look here. Look who them put up yourself.
Let's see, oh, Delroy Williams.
So look who them say resign, resign, and you know, just for them thing over the news, resign. And then about one or two, and then as, as JS. Him, deputy. So what them I use? Yeah, man, this is, this is a fair.
General Secretary.
Where else?
Yeah.
A fair this, you make the place now where else? He might go drop further close to him now. General Secretary.
So them I blame, it, it, it look like them I blame former Minister Morgan.
Yeah.
For the election loss, like them I blame him for, but he never have much.
He must the head, you know, for the PR stunt, tell them I blame him, tell the PR stunt not work. Kevin look on the thing, he might, them I say, yeah, you with the PR stunt, they go to the, and set up people and then keep doing.
Them say, so they, so they worry about the PR, you are there fast with people, so.
I said, people come, come out on the shoe and the way you look, I go for, no, what, then tear go down. Then tear off on the shoe, Ratty, when you're done, so. And I talk about them like, wow, when we look at my picture, them put up. And then they come back and me, Ratty, again. Eh? So them blame him. And plus him lawsuit and think them are blaming.
Yeah, because them I say, him, him, him never pay full attention to him job, you know, him, him.
Him should not twist it.
Not fast with people.
So them want put now, who them want put there now, that are the, from the actually, the one where them putting there, down there, ah, him. When him add cock or something, add cock or something.
Oh, I know where I talk.
Yes.
Yeah.
So them want put the actually, from up the, up the axilin, ah, him, them must say want put another position there right now. Yeah? So that one, but for them thing, I feel resign because him fear them. And I him fear them, you know. And it does him. Ah, 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 Andrew himself. So what them do, them not do nothing to themselves. Eh? You see that changes that the world? Make any sense to you?
But what on there? Ah, ah, sir, isn't he a senator? So if him, if him do that, him have to step out then.
Senator.
That will create a vacancy. So, well, you say, is your favorite police commissioner, I go, them are, them are told to get a seat there.
I think them are turning, you know, turning, no, them are to turn it now, Minister. Can I make, can I not send it, I turn it, try information, misinformation. So them, them, no man, if they put the Google, I, I, the Google, they want them put them, I'm a tie that, you know. I'm a tie. So me no mind them put back my tie in the place, but we can't deal with it, Ratty. But women have my tie, what we do? What we do, brother? Them not give them more about my tie, man. You see, we have said, see thing them are run coming all over the place, you know. It are run coming all over the place. Yeah, man. Yeah, man. So them are run coming all over the place. But them I blame him and them tune get lawsuit and everything, but them I try do is, them I try take the eat off of themselves, Ratty. So I keep now for there, for the eat off, off of them, you know, Ratty. Like them are doing something. Yes. So them are, like them are do something now, you know? Yes, Maria.
No, this is just a distraction really, because the ma- the ma- the major issue that we're dealing with is this issue of the DPP and what came out of the court on Friday. That is the major issue. So whatever happened to the jail fee post-mortem on the, on the election loss is nothing, is, is mild compared to the bigger issue which affects the country as a whole. And everybody is watching what is happening in Jamaica right now. Caribbean, internationally, it is on everybody's watch list because we've never had this kind of situation. We never had a situation where the DPP is fighting to stay on and a government is going to court to make sure she stays on. Is she the only person who can be DPP in Jamaica? There are so many qualified persons here. And what I learned from your show yesterday, Ratty Khan, um, when Mr. Wildman said that it doesn't have to come out of, the, the DPP doesn't have come out of the DPP's office. The person doesn't have to come out of the DPP's office. So they can choose someone outside of the office to do so. And I'm sure there are many qualified persons who can do the job. Paula Lu is not the only person. And also that he was next in line, he was qualified. Now, he's qualified to do the job, but she, she was second in line and she got it because they removed his application from the pool. So she got it. And looking at her te- her, her, um, her tenure, it, it is a dismal one. It's a really a dismal one. So I'm wondering, you know, how she feels right now, given all that is, that is going on with her, all that surrounds her. And if she, you know, is really given thought to what people say that she is compromised and she's basically, she was basically there doing the job of the government and not of the job of the people, the taxpayers that were paying her. So it is, it is a sad situation for her and her reputation was tarnished before, but it is now literally in the gutter.
Alright, so people, you know, she said, I tell the, so them that she may do, right? I in this, you know, see now, see me himself, Ratty.
Yeah.
Um, um, Bog Life, remember the lawsuit still, they still sound alike. We are letting go of the lawsuit, right? But see there?
Somebody just sent me.
In the viewers.
A dear friend of mine just sent me, sent it to me, you know, and say, what we say, Abay.
Abay, see me, PR chairman, people, see there? Me not tell you say my PR, a PR stunt, them use, him had a PR chairman. Him say him fail. Can him use the.
But you know what, man, I'll be honest with you, you know. They still feel, feel a little, you know, uneasy about the whole thing, because you know, once the people go through them things, you know. You know, once them, them, you know, Lowson tough on him, him ask them why, no man, we should have put him through more, but.
I can't put him on for what.
But, but, Ratty Khan, Ratty, Ratty Khan, look at it this way, look at it this way. This DPP brought this on ourselves.
Ratty, Ratty have a heart, a nice heart, you know. Ratty a good man, Ratty a good man, you know. Ratty say, oh, you know what, I didn't go through them thing, yeah. But same time, you know, Ratty, I knock him with a, I teach him some manners, I knock him with a, with a lawsuit. But Ratty, yeah, man.
Both person brought on themselves. Yeah, but listen to this. The DPP brought this on itself and Nestor and, and Robert Morgan brought this on themselves as well. You know, so, sometimes they, they say, they're the same that you stand for something or fall for anything. And this is where these two people are right now. They didn't have the morals ground on which to stand. To say, no, I cannot just accept everything, this yes man and yes woman thing is hurt people. Tarnishes reputation. And this is where they find themselves, and you, you have to say no to somebody. Even the Prime Minister, he, he is, he's wrong, tell him he's wrong. Don't just say yes, Thomas, and then come up with a bag of rubbish and then, who, you see, anything this Prime Minister touches, you know, dies. Because look at all these people whose reputations are being ruined because of, you know, being in his circle. People who are ready to tell lies, the minute you get into Andrew Hone's circle, you have to start telling lies. You know what I'm saying? People who maybe had some semblance of decency in terms of their character, the minute they get around Andrew Hone's, boy, some, something rub off on you, start being shady, you know, come on now. There, there has to be somebody within the Jamaican Labour Party to stand up and say to this Prime Minister. Enough. Enough. The party is bigger than you and the country is bigger than you.
Living wisdom, um, just say, God on time, that's true. Mr. Brown Brown, we miss you last night. You never show for the party. We miss you. You have to give an explanation because, you know, it go, the thing live up, live up, live up. It's not go on last night, but we need you. So don't miss this Saturday. But get back to it, Lowson, I said, no, you see, there's a part of me where you know, it, it, we not just, we just don't like the people suffer. And to me, this is more than suffering, this is humiliating, you know? And I, I, if I had a Prime Minister, I'd find some other way for him to get out of it. I would have just, from last week or so, I would have make him just make the announcement, say, listen, we are moving so that, you know, him have more responsibility over here and because of that, him go and leave this to somebody else and quietly make him gracefully leave, but for, for deal with it that way, I, I feel for him. And, and for my listen, my feel, my just want them know, say, no, I'm sorry, set up that way to him, you know. I mean, him forgot, but not that way.
No, I mean, for last week, so, so me do, me do the show, and I said, yeah, then kick him out, they might kick him out.
Ratty Khan.
So me tell you, it is my name, so I'm never have to wait till this week.
Never trust the words of a politician.
Alright, so in the end, I was, you know, I twist him, I tried to support what thing answer we negative. And I'm negative because I encourage it twice all the time. I will, yeah, him I come and say. He demanded a one, come and say Buster Bill, Buster Man the Hospital, me have heard him say, no, it was an army hospital, army barracks. Then get them and go put a name on it, but you have to learn, it's too better, stop do these things to people, make sure. You, you check your thing and make sure it corrected, no tabloid on here, make sure your thing corrected before you put it out.
Not my words.
Yeah, man, so yesterday I thought about, but even though those went out to something, and we also we run us up. You see the power of, of social media now, let us realize, very powerful. And then them, 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 you know, traditional media houses now can't save them. Cause you know, one of the time, you know, Ratty before you say something, you know, they might call upon my good bedroom, when we know from TV, from J B C days. Cardel Green, you know, trim around the broadcasting commission, I'm a bedroom, you know, let me just tell you now. Carl, when we live in the wilderness, a lot of people, me and them good, who know if you know that, we just like all people name. So they might think Cardel Green could have, you know, the integrity commission of Jamaica, could have tell we say, hey, seize on this is top broadcast. That the Jamaica can control, the local thing, not we, we do our one though, and we are one and accountable.
No, you, you know what, and, and this is, this is the chat, and, and Mister Bram Bram. Yeah, me know, him say, where him say about me alone some, but at the same time, you just, you just know, you know. You, me not like, me not like see them kind of things, you know, there's a way where them could have, yes, he had to go, but there's a way where they could have do it. To me, this is very humiliating, you know what I mean? And so there's a way they could have do it like last week, cause look, this is, it's not last night, they make up their mind for do this and all, make up their mind. Yeah. Them should have give him a chance, them should, what I'm sure I do is just give him another set of responsibility and say, listen, we're going to put him. We're going to have him dedicate more time to the P R thing of this thing, and so we're going, making, we're going to move him from the office and have him do something else, community. So, yeah, put him out there, but. Call the meeting now, where you know, the whole Jamaica and the whole diaspora watch this thing, and then you just kick him out like this, um. It does not.
No, you're thinking, but you don't think the Prime Minister, um. Told him, said something to him that, you know, well, you know. We no longer have any confidence in you, so I'm going to let you go. I think they must have had that conversation.
Nobody bought of the confidence.
No, he, no, I know he doesn't, but listen, I know that he does not, I know that he does not, but this is Angela you're talking about.
I know what you're saying, I know what you're saying, that, that, but, but look, Maria, I, I'm, there must have been some way that they could have worked out, that him just leave. Quietly and then you don't have to make the announcement saying resign, you see what I say? You make him leave, make him leave and just.
In your, in your next life, you're Sir Ratigan, you'll, you'll be the Pope.
No, I have to have a good, a good heart man, not to say, I am still sorry for Bug Life, for Bug Life, she don't know that I say he. I wonder if I dropped the last, no, he said for me now, but I.
No, 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 no. No.
Yes, no, I discipline everything that.
No, 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 don't get me wrong, you know, don't get me wrong, but nah, drop the last suit. And I think he should go, but it's just how, you know, you find a way to just ease him out, you know? It's, this is, this is disgraceful, remember now, we know, this man was the voice and the face of the government, of the cabinet.
Yes.
That, that little body that runs the country, he was the voice and the face of it, and if you treat him like this. No, Catherine, me nah drop the last suit, no, 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 no. No, no, last suit.
I pray my prayer, no man, I dropped the last suit now, so I just, I had to say to himself.
No, no, no. We just start, right, we just start for the way them treat him today, them could have find a way for slowly, you know, make him take him exit. And, and, you know, people have found one that what really happened, I know Jamaica, five days later, nobody know, everybody forget about it, but this now. A big story now.
Something with Ratigan, even though he should go, he should go, they're still making him a scapegoat. Because he's not the only reason the party lost the election, the reason the party lost the election is the leader. The box stops with the leader, so he, he's just, he, he, yes, he should go, but he's also being used as a scapegoat.
Now, here's the thing, them can't even manage, think about it, them can't manage the party. Them can't manage the country, but them want to come manage the diaspora, how do I want to work? How that work?
Them ought to add a. Him depart everything and look on, look on them face, look here. But you say all this now, me know I should Ratty this, you know, look on him face. Ratty I saw a film, then look at Ratty, I go, no sir, Ratty, no sir, Ratty I saw a film, you know, man, Ratty. More than take off my shoes and walk by market too. Go ahead, no bus, no driving.
So what I know, now that, now that, now that he's no longer a minister and resigned, does he still get the privileges of a minister?
Well, what's with that, you know? No, man, what you that?
No, by law, no, by law, no, but remember now, this is Andrew Hone's administration. So the law and traditions and norm does not apply.
Leave them on the chat, I kill me now, the ones said to me, say they must send me tissue and they want to do this and they want. No, scratch, no, seriously, scratch, me, me, me not like the way they handle this, not like the way them, them treat him today, you know? Look, don't get me wrong, people, he had to go and the last suit will continue. But there's a way, oh, you do things, just slowly ease people out and a way, you know, bring disgrace and embarrassment to them. And that's what happened right now, that's what I'm right now, him, him had a spin right now, him, him made, he made a spin, he not know if I come or go.
Ratty the man debased himself, he debased himself, you know, so you can't.
But me tell him last week, you know, so yeah, well, them that plan for the now. They might plan for use the actually, but them that plan for use, they see that a chalk. And some other people say, yeah, man, I did see that this him, you can't go use him in a Bug Life's place, them that plan for move up the chalk, you know? And, and that's why you say kick off, that's why they don't want wire up Lydier Clark, Lydier Clark get wire up yet last week, you know? You know, put up the things that I'm offering him, my man, yeah, man, Bug Life, that's true, let me show you, let me show you.
Can the marks, McCool man, can the marks, the nassu nah drop, man, it nah drop.
When you think you had the last.
Yeah, Joe Blocks, you're right, him bring the disgrace upon himself, but you know, have a. You, you, you not have exaggerated, you know what I'm saying, you not have multiplied upon him, him bring it upon himself, just la- if I'm bad. If me are the Prime Minister, you know me I do, now call him in, I said to him, you watch out, you have to go, right? So make a figure out a strategy where you can go and it not, it not cause embarrassment to you and your family.
Alright, sorry about it, so I'm sorry. Look, a couple of days ago, let me see breaking news, man, I see breaking news, but I'd say this so.
Oh, that's right, big, a Bug Life, I get that's right.
Alright, see that, see me put it up there, me tell you, so him never, him see it. Whenever me tell you, so them that see me, so if them never tell him, him know, because me tell him. And me have, I'm at the bug, you know, I'm supposed to, I'm supposed to depend on my own wall, him supposed to hear, yeah? So Ratty, I'm a warn him like this and say them that see me, you know, the time for serve, I think them that see me, them I blame him.
But you know something, Ratigan, but, but, yeah, but here's the thing. Even if, but, you, you know, like Ratigan saying, the Prime Minister should have, you know, they should have talked about it before behind the scenes, to kind of take the edge off a little bit. But if the Prime Minister didn't do it as he did it right here and right now, we wouldn't be talking about it. So it is a, it is a way to distract from the real issues and to take the heat of the Prime Minister.
He would have talked about it. He would have talked about it.
He would have talked about it, yeah, right. Yeah, but, but you see, this is the thing, you know, the Prime Minister is kind of taking some heat off himself. So the focus now is on talking about Robert Morgan. Inside of all his shenanigans, but so instead of talking about the Prime Minister, the government. Deloitte Chuck, the Attorney General and all the things going surrounding the issue with the D P P. And her unconstitutional tenure, so you know, the, the Prime Minister, um, did this to get this kind of reaction. You know, but the, the focus is really, the focus, you know something, the focus is not on Morgan, he should be fired, end of story.
Alright.
Prime Minister is the problem, Andrew Hone is the problem.
Ratty, Maria, let me tell you something, when, when, alright, so, so you have a big act pen. And you move up two little agar, out of the pen, I have two little bug and what have you, like. Where do, it not change, now even if you take a one, you have to say, oh, in this, it are the same party this, well, the Prime Minister, alright, so Bug Life. Bug them that's a Bug Life, so this make the Prime Minister, um, declare him, him asset demarty. This, this, it exposed the six, the illicit six.
No, and that's why I agree with sis, because when she say. The, 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 this take the focus off of the real problem, right? And now, look, what are we to talk about? Prime Minister information, instead of talking about the Prime Minister was the real problem, so I agree with her.
Not a real problem, nobody do it, you know, because.
If you might quietly move him, if you had quietly moved him, that would be over and done, it was still a focus on it. But now, we now focus on the Prime Minister, talk, we are focused, so that's a, that's a good point.
Well, me meet the Prime Minister every day, you know, so him know, him want to get, so Ratty, he might do something for you to talk about this. Come and say, yeah, man, give Ratty something, can arts have to be the man, you might talk to the man in the wilderness, you know, you know? And no man, I tomorrow may beat the Prime Minister again, we just beat him this morning already too, so, um, yeah, man, bye tomorrow.
Oh, and sorry to interrupt, let me just say that. Today, we finish up the document for the D P P. The one where, you remember the one where she, 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 she was interviewed nationwide, and she said, oh, I've been involved in. Jury tampering cases, well, that one, we'll finish up the document, so that I will go after the Prime Minister, King Charles and the Governor General. Between Tuesday and Wednesday. And before the end of the week, we have a bunch of people who have filed some complaints with the G L C. And we're going to call the media, make them know, we'll give them copies, so they can publicize it that a group of people in the diaspora. Has filed, um, complaints for the D P P to be investigated for conduct unbecoming, right? Whatever them call it, you know, the, you know, the technical term, but essentially. And oh, we are going to ask them to go back and look into these, look into all of the cases where she claims that she worked. Uh, where, where, where there was jury tampering, because we want to know what people end up in a prison as a result of what she did.
Yes, yes.
So.
But you know something, Ratigan, yesterday on your show, and I'm wondering if the big government is now moving expeditiously to make sure somebody is in the office tomorrow. Because Mister Wildman said something on your show yesterday, that if the D P P shows up for office tomorrow. Any Jamaican citizen anywhere in the world, local or in the diaspora, even you, whether you have any standing. Can go to the Supreme Court and file an injunction against the D P P. But I wonder if they heard that and say, you know, something, that because somebody is going to, can I thought about you? And I say, oh, Lord have mercy, she better, she just better pack her bags and go.
I'll gladly file it.
I, I, I know, I thought about it, I said, I hope this lady go because she, if she shows up Monday morning. I know what he's going to do an injunction against her. So I, yes, I, so I heard it, yeah.
That's valid, because that's, that's part of the mandate of the One Jamaica Legal Defense Foundation, is to hold government accountable and she's part of government, so yeah, we'll file it. No problem at all.
Make a deal with that thing a quick, as I come up, because these are the way where them try to minimize some talk, and we not unite with them, you know? Look on, look on a caption, yeah?
Okay.
Let me say we can't see it better, hold on.
So Breaking, Breaking Paula, then, um.
Stepping away, yeah?
Stepping away as Director of Public Prosecution.
Stepping away.
Public Service Commission to support acting D P P, so that's what I'm saying. No, but there's the thing, do they have her, do they have a, a Public Service Commissioner or not? Is there one?
No, them know, him does a topic, I write a way, she not stepping away, listen, the people them catch her and finger her out. She not stepping away, them tell her for squat and calf too, them finger her out. They might, but, yes, they make it so nice, she's stepping away, with Paula step away, I finger them finger her out, nobody know recognize her. People that quote and them ask her, who them? They might ask she too, yeah, she not step away nothing, them tell people to watch me, you know, because Ratty distant me telling about me, you know? I'm here, you have good cap and bad cap, them tell her for squat and calf, she have to learn for squat and calf, herbs, she for. I'm back for search, but let me tell the wife, she have a squat and calf now, you have a lot of, you know, have a lot of filing down, even the filing cabinet. We can't make she go with it, because there are some things there where she will go hide, but she know, she not prosecute nobody yet. So me not want to file them, go away, so you have to make she squat and calf, she must not go back at the hill in. She have to drop out the filing cabinet, we can't save that, we no business, yeah, both just stepping away, she not step with them on her.
You know what, I want to me to tell her to, you know, I mean, we're going to file the thing them this week, right?
Yes.
But here's another thing. Something just hit me out of the sky and said, you know what, the, the. Someone come down and hit me, you know, right, someone come to the room, the first one come down, you know, lick me, you know, if I'm with it, and say, you know what? I think she have the, the, the illicit six, the files, some of the files, I'm, they in our desk, you know, it's one of them deep on our desk, right? Something just tell me that, so I write her and ask her, and say, please tell me if you have the files then. So she wrote in the back and said, look, I tell my, I taught my secretary responded to you, but let me respond to you. I'm, I'm not in any receipt of any files over here, that's what she said to me. So me just want, you see when, you see when the, the five were pending right now, you see when that become public? If me seen it, that they were sent to her for an opinion and she agreed, okay? Okay, Michaela, yes, all of the people must send them for, to, um, donate, yeah, man, I need to do, but. Somebody inside, I forget who said, well, Ratty, Ratty can't beg, and that true. Ratty can't beg. So. Yeah, JP, if I, if I find out, because I have the email from her where she said that she never, she now received no file. So. Carla, come in.
Well, me I tell it, look here, boy, them I push up on them face, so yes, them put on, them make sure and go a big mama, acting. Acting D P P, apparently this week, and tomorrow, not this week. So I give them time, say, yes, I would, so the chop this, the barford. You see it, see there?
But given, given, given the, um, given the ventilation of this issue, you know? He just cannot go ahead and do it without consulting the opposition leader now, they are forced. To talk with the opposition leader because then they're going to have another constitutional crisis on their hands if they don't. Because the constitution does say he must consult the opposition, they need to talk about that composition. It's time for the government to start respecting the constitution and to think that these are the people talking about constitutional reform. You can't allow these to rewrite, to rewrite the constitution or reform the constitution in a way, shape or form. Because they're too corrupt and they have been violating the constitution and they have violated it on so many occasions. So they are not qualified to do, to, to carry out that task, they have proven themselves. You know, they have disqualified themselves from that task and it's very sad that the country has come to this because of Andrew Hone. I mean, what is wrong with continuing some traditions and norm that he went in the office and saw that work? There's nothing wrong with changing some stuff, but he shouldn't change it and have it affect the constitution. On a con- affect the constitution the way it has been for a very long time, and this is not his first rodeo. Have you have shown before, Wayne, with what he did when he was opposition leader?
Alright, but somebody else asks, officer, you know what, all, all that I go now, somebody want to send ten thousand dollar to you from Jamaica.
No, you, you, no, next week Sunday, folks, tune in to Loan Some Town Hall Meeting. Because we have the, um. The Q R code, the Q R code and the, and the. Yeah, and cash up, the cash up I got already by then, so everything. But listen, listen, somebody just sent me something, um. It, somebody just sent me something saying that. The Minister Morgan resigned from the post as Information Minister. As Information Minister, whatever, for the party. But, but not for the government, so he still is Minister of Information for the govern, for the, for the, for the government. But not for the party.
So he must, he must still Minister of Information, but not for the P R.
Not, not for the party, yeah, but for the government, yeah, because I think he had both positions where he was doing it for the government. And he was doing it for the party, so they removed him from the party and left him as a minister with that portfolio responsibility, so. Uh, some folks, it looked like he not gone.
No, but, but wait, seriously speaking, that means nothing, that means nothing. So if he is still in Minister of Information to carry out the same propaganda and the same garbage that he was carrying out before. Then, you know, like I said, the Prime Minister doesn't have the moral going on, which is time to hold anybody accountable. He can run his mouth all he want, but don't just tell him shut up and sit down, because he's too compromised to talk to them. He's way too compromised, so you know something, thank God a lawsuit not dropped, good.
That's what I say, can't say a female about it, I'm just.
You hear them say, them, them say he has resigned as party spokesman, but he's still Minister of Information.
So in a manner difference, if you are Minister of Information where you are spread bad ministry, your party not going away. And if you are chairman for, for the P R, the bad P R, I might give him, I him same as Arsenal, then P R. He's not going away, everybody, he not going away.
See, they said he resigned as head of the Public Relations Committee of the Jamaica Labour Party, so he's still a minister.
But, but, but my minister same way, with misinformation, we, we, we're still a rock club by him. Because I him racing over the ministry, the, the same thing that minimum resigned from nothing then, that not make no sense, eh? And then where, where you make, Omar, Omar, Omar nobody, Omar of the B M B, not A B M B, you know, of the B M B, Omar.
But, but looking at it, looking at it this way, you know, the, the, in, the party and the government, the government is more, is, is higher in hierarchy than the party. So him resigning from the party is really nothing, not important, had it, had he been fired from the government now. That would be of more importance in terms of, you know. We are real, in comparison to, to him leaving the party, he can leave the party and go on, that mean anything.
Mm hmm.
Means nothing.
Yeah, man, so them still in a turmoil, and some people say, eh, leave Andrew because him, ah, him had a. Ah, him had, ah, him had the, the, the drag down pandemic, you know, Andrew himself, you know, so no care when do, I just send it. Yeah, I see when them go and ask, I mean, I tell them flip flop same way people, so if, if he resigned from one. And him, him I do, Minister of Misinformation same way, it not make no difference, come a flip flopper. Him no go, no way my flip flopper, so you know that go already, him had a flip flopper, so I know him done. And, and Ratty, I'm putting aside females, I dropped the, the, the charges, that's what I say, I mean, listen, anything will come out of honest, they more than can, you know, listen to it. Nah, can I remember telling my flip flopper, you know, on a serious level, you know, them flip flopping, yeah? They have flip floppers on a serious level, yeah, no stop, nah, them doing, yeah, man.
Yeah, yeah, he resigned as the head of the Public Relations Committee.
So you see it, and the, the public relation thing there is a flip flopping thing, you know, but tell me why, I might have the ministry same way, I'm flip flop same way. Yeah.
Why they moving from this although, but I must say, never convey the message properly.
Tell more, I remember I'm lying about two, we not quite like, remember, eat the news and win election, you know. So now you're moving, can you, them things, and now they might put somebody in there now, where them can twist up the thing and get that, remember, say, Andrew tell them, you know. So they might forget out the message to the people, for say my do good. Ratty gun, if you had the government, I, I do good, yeah, and you do everything and the people, you know, you need to go tell them, say, I do good better. You need to keep me not tell them that, why the government not get that, you know, tell them self foolish, it's my talk already. You don't need to tell people, say, yeah, do good, if you had do good, it not make no sense, yeah?
No, big, look, if you had a good, if, if, whatever, you have the people are receive benefit, you not have to tell them, them know.
Yeah, of course, so if you get up and you, you have to come and say, you know, we, social media and we want, you know. Send out the message to the people then, because you know, we have to work harder to get the message, you know, I work harder for. Them want to work harder in a Maria, yeah, for brainwash the people then, we can't allow them for brainwash nobody, yeah? Dangerous, you know, I, then you won't win the election in two thousand sixteen, very dangerous.
It's very danger, but you say, but it, back then, you know, they didn't have the kind of social media that they have now to cont, as, as a contender. As their competition, you know, because um, I can't, well, the show that I've listened to, Jeffrey. Um, Jamaican Carlos, Jamaica Hot Topic, Mystic Sensation, and you know, Ratigan. Reason with Ratigan and then it's on, there are so many shows that are countering the narrative and bringing the facts to the people. So what won them, what, what won the election for the P N P is really social media, you know. Who kind of, especially, uh, um, I can talk for you, Wayne, how you dissected a lot of stuff. In terms of what it is the government is doing and what should be done. And how the people are benefiting or are not benefiting, so a lot of that has, the social media has changed the landscape. And um, they can no longer rely on social media the way they used to, using the same narrative. That is not going to happen, because if they come with something, there's always going to be that counter argument, but these are the facts. Using their own words, I guess, I win, not my word, and that has made a lot of difference, that has made a lot of difference. Right, their own words, play for them to hear, and people are seeing them and saying, but wait, but the Prime Minister said X, Y, and Z. So how is he saying a different thing now, so their own words have, have, have become the milestone around their neck, so. So, there, there, there's no way out of it, but to do better, but to do better.
I'm going to show you something, I'll show you something, right, when you see, when you see this, I may tell only, so they might, they might think a joke, when you see this. When you see a baby, because you know, the baby reveal anything to you, when you have a baby like this, what is this, look on this.
That our continued economic recovery is dependent on our people. The government is actively pursuing ways to increase workers' benefits.
Now, Ratty, and I, I be thinking, you know, when you see a, a baby, I say she tired, I know, a baby, you know, a toddler. It, it, it is, this speak value, I mean, Ratty, I'm, I'm at the drag down, I, I claim some things. I hear some people say them vote for him, they might tell, ah, in, they might attack you personally, you know. So no care who want change, I'm gonna pan down, decide.
That our continued economic recovery is dependent on our people. The government is actively pursuing ways to increase workers' benefits.
No man, this serious, Ratty, that's it, that's serious. That no man, that's serious, I serious to this people, when you have a little toddler, can I come and say, easy, sell burger, I'm tired of you. And you ask, you tell them, I mean, no burger, that serious, very serious, brought to me have a lot, a lot on this. He said them that talk about some other people, ah, him them attack, you know, ah, him them tell us, they vote for him, them that believe in him and what him do. Him a draw down the Jamaica Labour Party, right, him had the biggest draw down, right now, him had the biggest liability. He my Elijah crap, by the way, remember just making a note, yeah? Tough tongue, you know, they might, they might grease him up for the thing and, you know, but, but we know that Ratty, you know. We know, but you know, we know, but him, them tired of him completely, I'm not joke, people tired of him. I remember, not my word, not my word, remember, I mean, I, I said nothing about you, you know, me just, me just play, people vote for you. And you're here, with them I say, yeah, yeah, with them I say, because you dangerous, remember play, remember play, remember play. Remember play a, a Belgian farmer, so here, here with the Belgian answer people, here this.
Dubai became a very big, famous and rich city.
You see, if you're, if you're comparing with Nigeria, listen to this, Nigeria has oil before than Dubai. It's a history, they are more rich than us, they have agriculture, they have mining, they have everything, you name it, they have it, am I right or wrong? When you have a true leadership, which we have, we have nothing, but we have everything. Because we have the right leadership, that's the only thing you need, a right leader for your country, not corruption. That's what brings your country at the top, you don't need anything, we don't have, we want water, we don't have agriculture, we don't have mining.
That's serious again, that very powerful Andrew, them have none, but them have everything. And them live good, the people them live good, Ratty go across and them part of it, they might live bad, they may live good.
No, because you know what happened, the, the, and people will say, well, then, you know, it's not a democracy. Because you have a one family where a rule and whatnot, but we always hold them viewed, it's a paternalistic society where the, them view themselves, the leaders. And view themselves as father of the country, so they have to take care of everybody, everybody of them children, and they have to take care of them. And so, them actually spend money upon the people them, granted, them, them keep money for themselves, but you can actually see all them spend it, you know. They're not just grabbing a stuff in their pocket, I am sure that them take money too, because I know of a case where there's a certain lead up on the um. On the Arabian Peninsula, where the money went into, the money for I went into his personal account. Personal account, and he used to spend X amount upon the tribes, and X amount in himself, and X amount on infrastructure. And in people them, and that particular country, you no see no suffering there, I've been there several times. Several times, but them take care of them things, you know, them take care of them people, make sure everything alright, things are on. You know, roads, water, electricity, um, you know, social, the social services net, um, net is there. Uh, jobs, and like I said, them don't have, them don't have much, they don't have much, they might have oil and all that, but what them do with it. Yeah, what they do, yeah, yeah, because all of them look upon it and say, hey, I am the father for all of them people, so me have to take care of everybody.
And I like them one, you know, with us, chop and talk a food, one bag of foolishness, more show you something, I more ask you a Marie something, right? Because I always hear them say, they both part of the same thing, and you know, they want them for the corruption and everything, but we just put something together. Because me the man, you know, my brain work different, Ratty, and, and I show you something, I show you, and we can't read with two thousand. Twelve, two thousand seven, you know, ninety seven, and we try them, more I look on, I look on the, I look on the Member of Parliament, they miss Ratty. And just look on them, more you look on Maria, more you look on them, and I stop them, and tell me if where you heard some of them name Carl up in that. Because remember, you know, you know, who in which party and who in which party, more answer what corruption look like, right, look on this. Some things to rest, right, remember, me just want to J I S, me just, I just prove, I look at. Them say the J P and the P M P the same thing because of corruption, alright, so I'm gonna show you some name, I wanna ask me. Who for name come up in a corruption, watch this now, the government member, this is, I think, two thousand and sixteen Parliament, I mean, go to two thousand and twenty two. I don't have more now, but, now I go down to the first one, you saw, and me go to back the rest, what's the name then, Andrew Onis. Alright, so people, the first thing come up, Andrew Onis, very clean and alright, right, hopeful, laughful and everything, come from the J P, right? Wanna put in another, in another chat, you know, what, Andrew Onis, just count too much of them, come on, see the party, I can just go through it like this. And then we look on M C V, Andrew Onis, one. John. Horace Chang, from WikiLeaks, cleaner nights and alright people, eh, the name, we just wanna know. I mean, I was party, that are two. So Horace, Bartlett. Bartlett, we're there in a, in a back bush, I mean, know the youth, they want him, Bartlett. Long time, why we are Bartlett, that are three, alright. Brown, that are David. Alright, we don't know nothing about David Brown, him step one side, him good, we can't give him a pass, okay. You don't know the name there, Michelle Charles. That are come from the child, so I mean, you know, what pusher, I can do woman and I do all kind of things, the father, the one toes, not they call and them thing there. So my whole lot, that are one, 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 two, three, that are four, yes? Charles, from the Charles, Bernard Charles. And the junior, this too. With the chicken feeding, but just took up in a Saint Thomas, that are, that are five. Robert Chin. China, the one where them just say, if you come at the I C, Ratty.
Yeah.
Really hide, yeah, more I know where my hide for, alright, put him at six, because you're alright, them not, them not call you, okay, continue. They ride Chuck. That are Chuck from Grant's Ben, where say I go on now, that are seven, now I got, now I got show you something, you know, just continue. Me, me, me notice them, right, me just a tell some people, right, them still did it right now. When him E Y Clark. This are, this are Xerox, Xerox know, him know what me a talk about, yeah, this a moment, say, say, my guy, I get already.
Him a deputy, him a, him a, him a deputy.
Him know what me a talk about, Xerox know me a talk about, so him count, that's alright, watch this. That's Xerox, you know, Lydell Clark. Lydell Clark, this you know, and the S S L guy this way, say no stone and curl and tell we say, who come F B I and all kind of things, enough money that, you know. So him I don't want to cover up something, so put him with them too.
Well, well, on there, don't forget, say, cruel, them, the government paid him over a million US dollars for the report, and I'll know when I see the report.
So Lydell, I want put we, so him too, we'll put him there so too, one guy just show you something, watch this. Ruda Crawford. Put her one side, we no business both for your lifestyle, she one side, she not, you know, in another class then. Juliet Catbert Flynn. Well, fear name they upon the borderline too, so keep up on the borderline, come again.
No man, she, she not upon the borderline, she gone over, remember she went, she was over at um, but she did, no, she did, the man, the man. Somebody calling and asking about what, and she tell a lie, yeah, and then, and then she was over, she was over at Ministry of Health. Move on out to Ministry of National Security, where she don't know nothing.
I, I see, she gone over this so too, alright, what's this now? Omar Davis. Ah, him this way, as a sergeant, him whichever last, he didn't spend a row over sixty million going to politics, over that, overtime packet, by the way.
Now, he does resign.
Yeah, them same resign, but remember, I'm a Member of Parliament same way, we don't know, oh, him so rich, so fairly close, sergeant, police, me don't know. For him pay bigger than everybody else paid, you know, and him well, which him come from a poor family, do, but him very rich, alright, you, you hear this? And no matter, and him, him not make me talk about, and, oh, you know, in a sentence back in the day, you know, me no want to have about that. But, now I say, put him over there with them, okay, continue. Tamika Davis. Put her one side, she know, yes, she good. Now man done. This are the one, I get the set number toes now, put him over there with them too, she not right, look at. Olivia Cringe. This are the one with man dead in a fear, care, gunman wanted man, with fear, name, pan, care, paper, she not get no lock up or nothing. I want more dead, sir, I seen a fear, care, a gunshot go through, show up in number five seventy two, I'm buried, fear name, calling everything, put her with them too.
Well, on there, you might want to add the fact that, that some people in the diaspora said that when them raised the money, the, the radio turned, the over three hundred thousand dollars. Them said that she was, some people said that she did get the money, and so far, them can't get no, um. They can't get no confirmation of how the money spent, the money was supposed to be for P P Es, and I think it, I think she, I think she was, was part of the. At least one of the recipients of the, of the thing, that is what I've been told, so.
That too, alright, alright, once she. Fried Green. Alright, so me can tell Ceta, say, I have a little case with a little girl, looking at Saint, Saint Elizabeth. With them bury, Ceta couldn't know what me a chat about, ah, him did say, so I live right too, I'm same on this.
Don't forget, and don't forget, the fertilizer, the Moroccan fertilizer.
Same one again, okay, alright, continue, continue. Two of our military. Put her one side, she don't know natural, two of her, alright. Mike Envy this. This are Mike Envy, you know, smoker, rest in peace, I rest in Zion, this are Mike Envy. Mike, me not have him said no more introduction, I might can with this, put him with them, alright. This a Mike Envy, Mike, me not have him said no more introduction, a Mike Envy this, put him with them, all right. Michael O J Envy, Mike Envy. The middle son Mike, they wanna see our own, me just wanna call the name them. Philip Enwick. Put him outside, we gonna pick him up this one. But put she now. Onis. Put her with her husband. You don't know the eight hundred million dollar house, the people them whatever, no, I just I show you something, you know, continue. J C Otinson. That are Jack Carson, another one toes eight, four hundred, they call land plus film one, where I'm putting her things and all kind of things, put him with them too. A Otinson this, okay. Remember one party this, you know, look here. Daniel Lawrence. All right, put Lawrence on this one. Yeah, we gonna see, we gonna see him now, yeah, voila. Crystal Lee. Put she one side, do not with them, just them them four there. Marlene Malau Fort. All right, she know, you know, you have put her with them too. Shavga with them, one bag of things, you can just go and name them. I see a massive account to you, Sean, yes, Ratty.
If for nothing else, she's useless, so just put her over there so.
She gone there so too, look here. Zevamian. Put him over there, so he's all right. Look what come on now. Mackenzie. The one you know, I feel two never them there fire shot in a different encouragement, but him a prime minister. I'm I'm, him a, him a, him a, local government minister. Remember, you know, when he was thing there, and make the people them tell what go on, you know? Them man are whichever lasting, you know? Continue. Robert Miller. Put Miller one side, remember, dead man I go over there so with them, you know? Okay. Look here now. Robert.
Skip that name there.
Mont Q. Again, tied it people, me they not talk about the youth care, the police care, or the gun them, or the six hundred million dollar, or the A A J, um, three million US. And plus don't say the aluminum, me they not talk about them there. Again, tied it, go tie him upside of them, all right, continue. Robert Nester Morgan. That are the bug life, what is everything, well, put him with them. Go with them too, you know? Cammer head and I'm betting everything that's bad, all right. Carencia Morrison. She know the one, right, where them are pay money, this a this a wrong thing, but that no liberal, I must see younger and thing, she work with Queenie. She for go over there with them too, you know? All right, continue. Marisia Philbert Darwin Pro. Well, Ratty, me not wanna see, oh, you buy a car like a Benz, I buy a new Benz, and you forgot saying up here. You know, you get cancer and I forgot, say, you don't even drive it and then be a liar and everything. Put her over there so with them. She goes, you go over there and then hide a bag of things.
She involved in some land deal, some land.
I know for them, them thing they go on. So she have to go over there with them, this are just one party now, people. And I joke me I make, me don't know, oh, it attracts so much of these people, continue. James Roberts. Lord Christ, now I him a green, where the police them green, we strike five, the dash for the case, so she not do what, and the man should have charged. Now him this, so James Roberts this, I'm saying to us. I'm not feeling in a WikiLeaks, I feel fine, I forget the drugs bar and land fee, drug drugs deal and thing. Not him, okay, watch her. Carl Samuda. Oh, I can't see this, I can't, I'm mum boss a grass, this is not, um, Ratty. Mum boss a grass, put him with them too, all right, watch her. Adley Shaw. The eight, the eight million dollar phone man this, you know? Yes, him for go with them too, you know? Remember, I'm building a little bridge thing where you can't drive under for one billion dollar and them thing there, you know, you know, you know? No, one party, you know, watch her. Dwight Sibley's. All right, put him one side, him now, him now go over there so with them. Delroy Slowly. Put him one side to him now go over there with. Marshall Smith. She a good girl, and she know I'm gonna hand out, and them I kick her out and put drunker jacket in our space now. In a, in a sentence. She where them about a party, she go, she not give me nothing, she not gonna hand out, she, I earnest bit that are this, right, yeah? She know another foolishness, all right, continue. Orlando Terrell Langton. Terrell Langton now, you know, say, Amber Agoo. Put him over there so. You know, me not even have experience, a Patrick, Patrick, a Patrick barely buy this. Put him over there so too. Wanna know a feeling thing already, all right, watch her. Christopher Tofton. He must go over there too. Market me twenty one point at billion dollar this so, Beverlyum, the hospital them, hey? Put him right factory, put him over there with them too, continue. Ann Marie Vars, Darrell Vars. Put them over here so too. You don't have to say nothing about them, just put them over there so too. No, tell me something, no, I talk some people where your name not mix up in a nothing, nothing, you know, watch her. Evra Wilmington. Put him over there too. One party this, you know? It unbelievably, you know? Look here. Andrew Wheatley. You have to put him over there, Ratty, remember where them put Andrew over there? I'm the da pizza jam, you know? Remember when they fill the pipe, remember five billion dollar, what that? Full of gas station, put him over there with them, all right. Donovan Williams. I him the central Kingston, fellow brother. So they were the parking, I'm the pain, the way, put him over there so too. Car we know what go on this so, yeah, all right. Fearwell. Put mommy by herself, put her over there so with, there the rest of, yeah, when I send Smith gun, yes. Williams. Moalan Wilson. This a, this a one of the drummer. This a one of the black drum liar, put him over there with them too. Him start bad, you know? With him lie itself too, and dangerous, and him them did one way, you know? Already, you know? Him have to go over there with them, come again now. Franklin Witter. Put Witter one side with Marshall them and thing, Smith, yeah, put him one side. Judge Wright. Him wrong, put him over there too, I'm be the man with a, you know, neck with chair. Come on now, that that are one party now, what, now go to the other party now, watch me. All right, I'm gonna see this now, that are the J L P, I'm gonna see the opposition them now. Opposition, what's the name them, Angela Blumberg. Wanna know anything about Blumberg there for me? No, fear name come up in a any? Me not see Blumberg, come on, watch her. Lutan Cousin. Lutan Cousin this. Say, me not know nothing with him neither, okay, watch this. Denise Dealey. Long time she did a, but she not in a mix up. You hear anything with it, but she? How much money grab with her or nothing? You see me I talk about Ratty, watch her. Mark Golding. No, a man they wanna can't call film name neither. You see, me I call the the prime minister name over, put him over there so. Mark, them a feel enough for them one thing by themselves, Mark G, don't, all right, watch her. You Graham. What you Graham do? You hear name in a mix up and them thing that too? No, okay, if they buy them there over there. Maurice Kai Lees. A Maurice Kai this, you know, them man are, what kind of mix up Maurice, you ever hear Maurice kind in a mix up, Ratty?
No, me hear my expose mix up.
All right, thank you, okay. Dan Anna. And me tell Anna, Miss Will, where which on them thing there? Different from them that say, me not like all this and that, well, she good, put her right where she for there, okay. Anthony Hilton. You hear Anthony Hilton in the mix up neither, put him over there with them. So look upon the two different party now, no, I show you, look here now. Fitz Jackson. No, sir, them man are more like angel too now, put him over there with them. So all them say the two part are the same thing, me just run and I show you something, you know? Look here. Natalie Nita, I see my name David right now, right? Wait, wait, when them can't say Natalina now? You ever put her with them, with Mark G them same way? So all them say the two part are the same thing, me I look upon them C V, continue. Philip Parwell. Well, film name Carl and film book.
Yeah, 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 film name Carl.
You order the one of them there, film name Carl. Okay, can we keep the target straight, you know? All right, watch her.
Put him over there so.
Put him over there so with them, all right. Michael Philip. No, you can't call, you can't call Michael Philip name in a, that not make a sense, go over there so with Mark G. Peter Philip. You can't call them man the name in a corruption neither, put him with Mark G them, okay. Julian Robinson. No, you can't call them man the name that I put them, so no, Ratty. See that, that. I'm gonna action or something now, because I want compare them, nothing about no party. And and me cook more, I start from name name. I want me start upon a name, tell me whose name only here in a corruption and mix up and money and everything. Okay, so I'm gonna talk to you to porno. I'm gonna talk to you to porno, Ratty. One, you know, one set come from one party and then I said come from the other party, you tell me now if the two party, like what some people say, come around the truth, you know? If them are the same thing, Maria, them are the same thing. Nobody can't tell me that. You can't say corruption when me look upon the people them individually, but them not party. And me call the sheriff, 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 here's a cherish, a chat money and do all kind of thing, sheriff, I serious man. So.
Well.
Yes.
No, well, here's why would I do it. I I wouldn't even put the opposition because of, the opposition, them not have the power, the purse strings, them can't spend no money.
Yes.
Them just.
No, you know, you want more work to them, through them say the party itself. Because you could have another opposition, but you're corrupted, you're in a jobs, you're in a mix up, you're in a rape, you're in a this. You understand what I'm saying? So that's why I'm a, as a member of parliament, me just a put, but the P M P and the J L P, through them say the two party them, me just a do it as the party then. You understand? So more I see, oh, much further the party are, like, you know, like them that people, a woman and call her name and say, you know, a gunman, a driver, and get shoot up, you know? And a she fear name where this turn of the car. And why for them name affair always in a this, brother? You understand what I'm saying, brother?
Right, see, the 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 thing is, um, there is, I don't think you'd find anybody who would say that there, the opposition party was never, never ever involved in corruption. I don't think you'd find. But what people are talking about is the level of corruption, they've never seen this before, you know? This, this, they might, you know, like one time, corruption used to, used to be committed in another cloak of darkness.
Yes.
Know the man who might do it in the sunshine, right in front of you, as the man who might eat, you know?
I don't know what I'm talking about, brother. That me had talked about. And then people come and say, are the two party I do it, I said then? But me had to call everyone as an individual, Mark Golden, my thing, how much money in teeth, how much, how much integrity commission, so come and say, him not declare something or something. You understand, how much money in teeth?
But but also, but also, Wayne, as as Ratty can say, they are doing in the light, in in broad daylight. When have you ever heard of a Speaker of the House going to court to defend their business venture? Speaker of the House, Member of Parliament.
Never happened yet.
Turned up in court, it has never happened.
Never.
Never happened. But it it is really happening in the light of day and they don't care, they do not care.
And enough money in my chat too, and enough money I chat.
Exactly, and I always say, when when people talk about Mark Golden, they have to first understand that he was a businessman, corporate lawyer, before he got into politics. For his financial situation should not factor in, not that he should not be met to the same standard. Because he has to have some standard in terms of measurement, you know, what kind of a person he is and all of that. But remember, he was Justice Minister and Senator, he was Senator and Justice Minister. And there were no um, reports about him doing anything, you know, illegal or or corrupt as it relates to running his business while in that position. So we have to, you know, call a state a state and be fair and balanced. Right, we have to be fair and balanced. But um, the 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 corruption is happening in front of our eyes and is that they are saying, don't believe your lying eyes, don't look over here, look over there, nothing, nothing to see here. Business as usual, so it is, it is sad.
The amount of money I chat and not not one, and nobody not get charged, I want them to get charged. Remember, you know, me still not talk about um, thing that began, you know? We have five years I'm awake from from film case in a Ratty. The minister of 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 education, five years. Five years, two thousand nineteen and a half now.
You know, you know, you know the thing about it. I was just making some notes here. If you can't, you can't eliminate corruption, right? You can't control it, but you can't eliminate. But certain things you don't expect. The, even if there's corruption, you don't expect the level that we're now seeing. When you go in and you tea from the future, you tea from the children. You know, when you're going in your teeth and mess up the environment with the backside and with the, with the, you know, the pollution of the rivers and the fish and all that. When you think about, when you think about health, them going and teeth money and cause people for dead. When you think about national security, when you think, when, you know, I mean, these are critical, critical areas that you think they would have said, all right, if we are go teeth, let's not steal from those areas. Let's not steal from those areas, right? Because those areas directly affect the population. Make a teeth like a money off, like a road works or, you know, teeth like a money off or something else, like, uh, me don't know. Something else, but when you start, when you, when you get so brazen and so bold that in, in, in the light of the sunshine, you go out and you start teeth from education, not tell me say, you know, have no heart, no heart whatsoever. And your teeth, look, your teeth and you use your help of help your teeth. And then you, then the, 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 the depravity of the whole thing. You use her for help your teeth, I never give her a good piece of money so that she would have keep her mouth shut.
What, who you think the police offer, I nearly lock up, she.
She, she.
I just said, no, but me not have the book, I them have the book, the man are using wife, you know, teeth, I use your wife and your own kid, so go put them up prison, man. And a smart thief that man, that a wicked thief, them not love, them not love themselves. And by the way, I'm not like you hungry, now them teeth, they forget one toes years in a Ratty. Yeah, and I like a man hungry, he got teeth, a man go, a man near work.
Yeah, I mean.
That's an example.
I go, I don't agree with stealing in any way, shape or form, I do agree with it, but you do it, it gonna happen, right? So why you, why you don't can do it, and you said, look, I'm against it, you know it gonna happen. So the idea is, okay, how do we control it? And that's why we 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 get the information from P I O J, and we're going to look through it because we want to see how much money come in. And them can't lie now because we have an annual report now, where we get at the raw data now we get. So we are gonna see if it match up to the annual report, then probably take on the manual report now offline, because them publish it. But we all get it anyway. But we are gonna see where the money is spent, you know, because money, one of the worst things to me is when them take loans. And the loans, like the the COVID loan, and the loans, and we were supposed to go and help poor people, and poor people not getting the loans. And now poor people have got turn on and start, they'll pay back the loans, to me, that that's wicked. That's wicked, you you don't provide no services, you don't give them no resources, nothing, and them have got turn on now. And for all the people who claim say, you you, them don't pay it, one man called about two, three, no, several weeks ago upon the program, and I go tell me, say, poor people not pay taxes. Me say, which part of Jamaica you come from?
They pay the most taxes.
In terms of poor people not pay taxes.
Are the rich people them not pay?
No, I I I Jeffrey, man, look for some stuff, and Jeffrey sent me a a newspaper thing, was say, yeah, um, what's a, I think it was twenty eighteen, forget that when, but it's a, as of this year, you're gonna have to pay G C T upon party, upon some basic food stuff, it must support people not pay tax upon, them not pay tax upon flour and sugar and the basics.
Them pay a tax for anything.
Yeah.
I'm gonna explain something to you, I'm gonna explain something to you, Ratty, you see? She will have the money if you buy half bag and a bag one time, they go to wholesale and buy it plus tax, you know?
Of course.
When you go a corner shop, go buy, remember, him have one little money, he buy quarter, quarter bag, him pay plus tax. He might not, and over the tax, the government, but him a charge you. So the porno for why that selfie, if you could have buy the quarter bag, you're gonna get it for thirty dollar pound, him a sell you for sixty dollar pound, come on now. You have, him a more than kill you, you're giving back the tax where him pay, you know, plus more. So poor people suffer, remember, nobody not trust you, nothing, so you know? Until you ever buy an tumult, it make you suffer more, but the big man know them give them waivers. Like Grace Kennedy get five hundred million waivers, that that tax day could have going or something in a some school, or in a ed, in a education, or in a health or something. Me, well, them a make hundred and billion in a, in a profit, you know, make no sense, poor people suffer.
And them charge you, even though them get the waivers, them still charge as if them are paying tax on it.
So when you get the money to buy a money tax, so he might, he might not tell you, but he put you tonight, it's a deal.
Yeah, but but like I said, when them go to Chinese shop, right, them thinks them people are buying them goods there, they could, you know, the ma, the the, not the.
The market, right?
Yeah, them them taxed, them have to pay a tax upon it.
Yeah, so them not, it's a price, yes.
This one I go run me down and tell me say, no, poor people not pay no tax, you know, tell me now.
No sense, so.
Him say, poor people, I'm asking about clothes, I'm saying, poor people buy, buy clothes on a market, and them not pay no tax, I'm just a bridging, no matter your size, it's taxed in a it. Taxed in a it, them just don't tell you that you're gonna be.
Taxing everything, man.
Taxing everything. taxing everything.
Anything, remember, they put up at the marker, remember, them carrying the clothes, they might put up the marker on it when they view tax. And they put it up all ten times sometime. Can't even get the extra cheap and where you buy it for you think it cheap, but you are, you are pay like ten or twenty times for the value. If them feel just sell it and get even, you know, double it. No, it gone up. So poor people suffer. It make you suffer. It dry out and keep drying you out. But they in the know that, them female not telling that.
No.
When you, when you are buy a squeeze a toothpaste, I you pay forty dollar feet, how much in a queue? If you could have buy a tube, you know, and go to supermarket, a plus tax, but that work or cheaper for you. But when I'm on the bite and sell you, he might, he play plus tax, you know, so I might get back the money there plus. He might, he might have an additional tax, him tax you. So poor people prepare double and triple time the tax. The taxes, oh, he can't work. Well, maybe, maybe I know one teacher, Ratty, or the guy from over Portland. We get the ten dollar, we get seventy five dollar over the ten dollar, and teacher man. So him, him brain not tell him, you know, eh, me can't one of my, eh, Ratty. Ratty, me tell the truth, you know, eh, Ratty have, eh, Ratty have, me not, Ratty have patient, you know, Ratty humble and nice, you know?
No, you know.
People tell them say, you, but you all have a white, you know?
No, what I know.
You know?
No, hold on it. You see, no, you see the man, not the, not the, not the brethren who say everybody white because he, he, well, with him, right, not at the end of the conversation, because what happened is that, that man was saying some things that, that blatantly false. Like him say, the, the, the Dred Scott decision is still law. It hasn't been overturned by the court. It hasn't been overturned. I'm not telling him say, no, it's not law, that law was about slavery. I mean, as the team said, no, physical slavery has been abolished and him go run me down. I'm going to tell him thirteen, fourteen, fifteen amendments, abolish it. In fact, if one I'm supporters, calm, I'm going to give, I'm sending the article, I say, read this and then call me back. He not call me back. It's abolish, yeah. But, but you see, the man who call and say, um, poor people not pay tax, that's the only person may ever hang up the phone, pardon you know. Only person, only person. They put up with a holy, but when me hear the nonsense, then I'm going to run me down and tell me say, no, poor people don't pay tax. What's a brethren? Pay a tax.
Suffer. If, eh, you see the hand to mouth thing, yeah, that's why them can't feed themselves. If them could I get it on a wholesale thing, I think they have more. So you, all right, I'm gonna sell, I'm gonna sell quarter bag of flour. You know, when him don't sell it, then get a bag money or that.
Sure.
Of course. These are the things where them don't.
Hold on, I know. You have a tell you this, come, you know, you know if you watch it. La, to that song the first other week, yeah, last week, early last week. Minister Terry Long had a launch for the, for the, for them, for them, for the, for their business conference, what they're having in Jamaica. Have a launch for the business conference in the UK. Then on Thursday, my man, my similar launch for the same business conference that they're having in Jamaica, claiming it to be a diaspora. It's a diaspora business. It should be named the Global Jamaica Government um, exposition, business exposition. That's where it's supposed to, it's supposed to, them shouldn't put diaspora in it. But them do a launch this past Thursday, right? And for the two launches, here's, it, it, it's basically the same thing, but here's one of the things where I'm say was struck me. Him say, the, they're, and when him said, him say it was such, he said, we are upskilling our people. Never hear that word yet. You know, him say, we're upskilling our people. And him say, so that's why the, the, the unemployment rate is the lowest it's ever been. It's four percent. Last time I checked yesterday, it was four point two percent, four point two, four point three percent, right? So him say, we're upskilling. And him say that because of that and people are earning good money in Jamaica. So him say, unokan, I soon stop send money come down here Western Union and so. So me start tell my people, I'm already know, so listen, you say December, I mean, I tell everybody, I say December, don't send no, send whatever you have to send to the people, you know, but December, don't send no money to Jamaica because the minister say, the minister say that they're making good money in Jamaica and, and pretty soon them will need, it says, it's less burden some for us to send money because they're making money in Jamaica. Now the people, you know, Jamaica not make no money.
Watch it, man. But I catch now them come within them, them just lie. They, 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 um, the statistic they haven't finished yet, but start, I was in them Stanton because one million people them reach and, and some people are spitting at them face and them not hear the people them yet. I do Elijah crack come with lines, I want four billion that them spend for do this. See, so I might take up the, the statistic and the work and everything in our one. I didn't reach everybody yet. So many know them come to the figure. I miss a two thousand fifteen, me, you don't care, go look on the same, um, sta, the, the statistic, right? Was a sim, similar two thousand fifteen, the workforce was one, one million, three hundred and twenty five thousand. And then me see, in a twenty twenty three year, so it was one million, in other, when, when me look on it, you know? One million, three hundred and twenty thousand. And now it moved to one million, three hundred and seventy seven, three hundred and seventy seven thousand. So you got over this. About seventy seven, around fifty, fifty two thousand, about fifty two thousand. And you say, you're one of a four percent, a four point two, and push a one then double digit, all that work. You know, you have more people and everything, but eh.
Here's another thing where I'm say, where.
Full man.
You, you, you remember when they come out, him used to run up on down and I talk about exports exceed imports. Him not say that no more. Him not say it no more because the stats, the stats, so I, I will beat him on that. So we know to say him not, not claim that anymore. But here's another claim where I make recently. Crime rate is going down and the crime rate, crime has been slashed by seventeen percent and all of that stuff, right? And I'm telling people, I'm telling people and I'm preaching it to them that, listen, don't make them tell you any nonsense. By the way, um, detective, I forget him name, the man who in charge of the statistics department. You know, we still have wait for that thing there, brethren. Um, we not threaten you, but if we not get it this week, we have to go to the, the, um, the tribunal because a while now, now wait for some statistics, you know, some, some, some murder statistics and it depend Fitzbilly's desk. For what, a month now? And we can't get it. So we have to try something, forget it. I forgot, I forgot, I forgot appeal. But here is a point now, I make. The man said crime slashed by fourteen percent, whatever. And I'm making the argument that this is a, this is like a Donald Trump reasoning. Is like where you create a problem and then you make, you, 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 you try and solve it and say, look at what I did, you know? So you create something, you increase something and then you decrease it by a little bit and say, watch, see, I decreased it. Look, when them get, when them take over the reins of power, the murder rate was twelve hundred and eight. And I say to them, that's the comparison. You don't get it up to sixteen hundreds, fourteen hundred, whatever, and then you bring it down by fifty and then tell me say, the, the murder rate. No, get it down if you want impress me, especially, especially, if you want impress the people of Jamaica, especially the people of Jamaica. Get it down to twelve hundred and eight or lower. And then they'll be impressed because remember, it was twelve hundred and eight when you campaign against it and say them can't sleep with them windows and door open. And you're going to spend more money than anybody else. And so it, it's unfair for them to make a comparison to the previous party because here's the thing. You already come, you already complain about what the other party was doing for national security. And based on those complaints, the people say, we don't want, the, the, the P M P, we don't want them, them don't know for fight crime, who want, who know? And them take you now for you, for you decrease it below twelve hundred and eight. You increase the damn thing and then when you, when you down by fifty, you come back and tell you, oh, look at what we're doing, we're cutting crap. No. That's disingenuous. Your job is to get it below twelve hundred and eight. Then people can't say, yes, we see where you're doing something with crime. And the thing about it, you can get it down to twelve hundred and eight, but not with this group of where you have, not with this group, yeah. So.
But Raffigan, you know, I, I'm listening to you talk about them saying it is reduced, they're given a percentage. But they, they are still above twelve hundred and eight, which means they have more pe, more lives lost. But while they're talking about percentage, it, you still have more people who are no longer with us. Those are the figures that are important. The people, you still have more people, more, as, as we said, more souls lost. So it cannot, don't give it to us in percentage. Look at, give it to us in less than twelve hundred and eight.
You take twelve hundred and eight in a twenty fifteen and you say, all right, let me look at twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty four. Did you reach, did, did, did you take it below twelve hundred and eight? Because that is where you campaign and I promise the people and that is where the people them vote for you for. So you violate a contract there because the contract was, we give you the vote, you get it below twelve hundred and eight because twelve hundred and eight is too damn high. Has it been below twelve hundred and eight since twenty fifteen? No.
No, but what's the character, one, one thousand and five two, you know? Well, we just, we're under that eight and then go down there, say, it's coming like a hard, you think like.
No, but what I do, me I take it from, where them get it, you know, me take it, yeah, them get it at twelve hundred and eight. And remember now, them said twelve hundred and eight was too high.
Yes.
There's a twelve hundred and eight, you can't sleep with the doors and windows open at twelve hundred and eight. So them say, we go and decrease it so that they can't sleep with the windows and doors open. And that's why people vote. So when them, when them say, oh, well, when the P M P was this, I said to them, say, listen, that, no, you don't, you compare, there's no comparison to somebody else. You compare it to your performance.
In one performance, now second.
Twelve hundred and eight. You don't say, this is where we are, this is where we are for beat. We have to beat twelve hundred and eight. That's it.
And then when, when they beat the twelve hundred and eight, that not mean him for beating chess because if they are beat, it's a, it's a go. One thousand and four.
Well, then you'd have raised the argument that a point there.
Yes, but they can beat the first step of your game first. Because we say, me beat the proportion, you know, because she have eleven hundred and two, she have one thousand and five. So you have to go down, you have to beat eleven hundred and, and they have to go down the one thousand and four, for me say, you're beat to a one. So you have to reach twelve hundred and eight first, you're right, Ratty. The first step that, and then can't reach it over eight years. He not, he not not talk, them a loser.
But I think the person in your program, I think the person in your program, Raffigan, that this, somebody came out and we talked about, Dr. Damian Crawford in, in, in parliament talking about how S O E's didn't work, doesn't work. And he talked about the program that Andre, I think, this is Andre Hartner Anthony, that, that, he was in Augusttown, that M P that got kicked out. Andre Hilton, Andre Hilton. He had a program in Augusttown that worked. And for a year, they did not have one single murder in Augusttown. And that program, instead of being replicated or replicated all over the country, it was scrapped by the ministry. So it's scrapped by the Andrew Holness, that administration when they took over. Now had, now, they are doing more S O E's and Z O Z's that are not working. But they did not continue the program that worked. So how then can they address the murders, the, the crime situation without looking at programs that are working?
Right. If I were the police commissioner and if I, if he would take my advice, I'd say to him, listen. Your benchmark is twelve hundred and eight. That's it. We don't want you no excuse. We need to get it at twelve hundred and eight or below.
And you have to keep it consistent. It have to go down below that, you know?
Yeah.
Get it, that's a first. You have to get it, that's a first, the first step. And now of eight years, him can't even do it, the same one man condemn.
And listen to this.
One man say, the man for step down and everything, and he can't carry it there.
But them undercut them own argument because remember when I'm say, that government never spend the money on crime. We, uh, for fight crime, we spend the most money.
Ah, you spend the most money, we spend the most, but we put a mass destruction and, and I know when I get the result over there.
But they're not getting, they're spending more for money.
Yes.
I'm not getting the results.
No.
I want them know something, you know, I want them know something. They might get ready for go Haiti, so they might go send policemen. So we have fewer policemen for dealing with the crime in Jamaica. What them not understand, you know? We're not going to have fewer guns. We're not going to have fewer criminals. We're going to have fewer policemen to protect us. What you think I go happen?
Body bag, someone for just sign, when I tell them to sign, many of them go left them wife, nothing. That, that we have. Yeah, Ratty. Yeah, mama, I tell them, I fear, I mean, I know where they go. Change a lot of them. The prisoner alone around four hundred, four thousand of them let out a prison, right, brother? And them not play. Them not play. So he has sent three hundred odd man, find a Caribbean, say, I train them for eight, eight months and then send them over there.
Them already are complaining. Them already are complaining to them not have enough people for the force, right? And then now you're going to send them now go. And you have no replacement, right, for them people there. So you have fewer people and even if you have replacement, a rookie them you are going to get, right, to run the street. What you think I got? What you think I got happen? First of all, crime, crime definitely I go up once them gone. And then you have the body bags, they will come back home. So it's, I don't know. I don't know.
You see, they're spend, they're spending money, but they're not, they're spending money, but they're not putting policies in place and programs in place to keep young people from going into crime because poverty is a problem, lack of proper education is another problem. So if you don't have programs in place to address those two major issues, then they are feeding the crime pipeline. So they, all well and good, talk about spending the most money, what results have you been getting?
Somebody in the chat said them spending most money on themselves. Hey, when, when did, let me ask a question, the loans, I, I, I says, when did, um, when did the, the, the V P, Kamala Harris, when did she give the Prime Minister the money for the at risk?
Around two years ago, don't, don't it?
Two years ago?
The last time, the last, the last, the female.
Twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three, I think I'm old, twenty twenty two, but no, two years ago. What me not see the money spent, that, that, that nearly five billion in a Ratty.
Okay. Because we have a look through the record to see if the money they accounted for.
You know, come on, in the minute now, you know, you get some money for giveaway, and you not come and talk and say, this, if we get the money, I will do this with it, then take it. Then take the check, then not talk to nobody. And next thing when me notice, Ratty, when them are travel, then not tell nobody when them come out, which part them are going up, not talk. Then just take people purse, like people taxpayers money like for them want. Then just get up and just travel. The one them are can't travel, can I remember enough of them can't travel, you know? Remember, what a deputy prime minister can't come over here, you know? I'm a deputy prime minister, I'm a good sir, we can't fly. We invite you, yes, so, I'm going to play this, Ratty. I'm going to play this, well, Andy. I guess we are invited, yeah, look here, look at this. Can't go down, you know?
The following is a public service announcement.
The Diaspora Crime Intervention and Prevention Task Force and One Jamaica Legal Defense Foundation invite Jamaican patriots and friends in the tri-state area to the second staging of a call to action. Meet us on Friday, May tenth, nine A M to one P M at Jamaica's consulate located at three hundred East Forty Second Street, corner Second Avenue in Manhattan. That's a call to action for Jamaicans and friends of Jamaica who are seeking the best solutions for Jamaica. May tenth at nine A M at the Jamaican consulate at Forty Second Street and Second Avenue. Listen to Reason with Rattigan Saturdays at three P M on Reggae Global Radio and YouTube for updates.
So, um, National Security Minister, we are invited for come here, so here, um, we are invited for come here, so. And in the meantime, I'm going to play this here too, um. We want you to sign up to this, you two here, look.
That, that our continued economic recovery.
Online magazine aiming to captivate and empower, look no further than Daisy Magazine. Daisy Magazine is the leading online publication in the U S. Subscribe to Daisy Magazine, the digital subscription publication. Subscribe at W W W magster dot com slash P slash Daisy. Subscribe to the leading online publication, Daisy Magazine.
I remember, I remember, if you subscribe to, yeah, yeah, man, good magazines, so, when I hug you in a feature, I'm going to tell you the truth. My, we have no feature for crap. But you, you have to subscribe. Subscribe and read up your thing. No feature for your crap. Eh, Ratty, no, no, but, but it, that's a normal, but I give my little feature. Can I, the answer, Ratty, Ratty, sorry, man, take a feature, you know? So I give my little feature, Maria. Not, not, not sir, you know, I feature no crap. Yeah, you go a red lobster, you want to get feature. Yeah, that's a rocky.
See there? So, so somebody put in that, a twenty, April first, twenty twenty two, she give him the thirty million.
Uh, thirty, yeah, a thirty or thirty one million. So, yes, so him, him take that a four point three billion.
Tomorrow make it, tomorrow make it two, four years, you know, tomorrow, two years. April twenty twenty two. April twenty twenty-two, April, yeah, April first, so it's over two years now, April first is, yeah, over two years.
And when are you not bought the money?
Right, now I go through the thing, another thing, um, uh, Herb T, Herb T, Herb T have a, um. My forensic accountant, and we will go through the whole of the documents, then, and we will line them up and give a spreadsheet and show where the money go. So then we can actually, if them say them get money for be like clinic, we can't say how much money, we can't say if the clinic even exists. And then we'll go and see where the money, or the money spent, you know, because, and when I tell you, say, my blah blah. The money come for me like a five-room clinic, and then when you go as a one-room clinic, you know, a two-room clinic, and you say one to the other three rooms then, so. Yeah.
This is why, you know, that is why I want people to say that, um. They need a third party. You cannot get a third party without first cleaning up these first two. You have to clean up the system, clean up this what we have now, and then, not, that does not room for a third party. But my thing is, let's clean up, let's clean up what we have.
Maria, trying to check Ratty, you know, them blame me, you know?
Pardon?
You see, Ratty, Maria said the third party, but you see, I'm not going to check, and them a blame me, say me mash up their party. She will me ask a question.
But, but, but the thing is.
Nothing. No, man, just a third, no, me I said the party, I'm on a, but me ask, see candidate, um. And, and I know, I mean, you know, candidate, so me, I say, maybe we interrupt, maybe, no, I interrupt you, them, and I'm.
Part of the mashup, man, a part of the mashup, mashup, mashup.
But you see, that's what, but you see, but the thing is, you know, Ratty Gun, to have a third party without having accountability from you. For the first, the two that we have here, does not make any sense, because the same corrupt system would be in place. So we have to be with the corrupt system, take care of that. Not that we're going to get, take it away a hundred percent. But when you hold a few of them accountable, you send the message that this is not, this will not be tolerated. So you will attract better politicians, and then you can see why a third party will work. And then again, if you clean up the system, so much so that both parties are playing by the rules, abiding to the constitution, not violating it. Then we wouldn't see a need for a third party, because they are working on behalf of the people. But you have to clean up what we have, instead of just saying, bring in a third party, no, the system of power plan is still in place. It is not the party, no, it's the system that is in place, that needs to be changed, before you can bring anything. Any different group, any other, before you can bring that in, let's clean up the system of corruption first.
True.
You know what? That's why we are fight for the right for vote. And people need to make the contribution, you know, because we are fight for the right for vote from overseas, just like what I do. April, me, I think it's next month, next month, Dominican Republic. Um, them have about, somewhere close to a million citizens who live outside the country, who are going to vote in the, in the elections, right? They register them on things like that, so why we can't do that? And they've said that they've been exploring this idea, well, they promised us since twenty fifteen. The government, when they were in opposition, them say, yes, you know, not supposed to vote. And then them come on board, and them say, yes, we're going to explore the thing, they might explore from twenty fifteen, and up to now, we can't get it. Last year, twenty twenty-two, December, the Prime Minister said that, yes, um, him all for constituent vote. Voting, our people not understanding, we must say, no, we must say is this. We're going to make all of the people, if we're going to make no vote, we're going to make all on a vote, you know, one constituency.
Not, not the right.
One constituency, because we don't want to not have the, no, we don't want to not get no ideas, and talk about to not change the government. So wanting to vote in a one, the, the four or five million people outside of the country, whoever eligible to vote, him just say, here's a constituency.
Where you come from, where you, and them in know, can you have your TRN, it doesn't know where you come from, and things, you're ready to start voting that constituency, it's simple. Them not my problem. And I'm a, I'm a, I'm a change the TRN name, now I'm a call it needs, because truth of the nine unit number there. I eat at the, at a database, so them are using of them needs. So you have a TRN, them know where you born, I can tell them, you know? I had to tell them where you live, if it change and things, so them know where you come from, say, where you live, them that know. Uh, where you live from, or whatever them that know, you're ready to start a vote here. If me not come from, when I already start a vote, then maybe I may not come from, maybe. That, that may not say to me.
But this is the thing.
Maybe I'm a ready star, what me address, what me thing there?
No, but this is the thing. The thing is, the thing is, i- if them go to, because when, the way registration would have go, the way I envision it is that them would have come and say, what's your last known address, right? And that's easy, because what happens is them can't approve your last known address in a, in a, in a Jamaica. And that's where we are going to register you for voting in other constituency. And that's fine, you can, or them say, pick a constituency, but when them say, no, the whole, oh no. Who would familiar, it's only one constituency we are going to put to name, all of them.
No sense, that mean, that mean, in a Jamaica, now you have one constituency now. I have, you know, them have thirty thousand for the voters, it's a constituency that have maybe four, three million people for the voters.
Right, right.
That makes sense? That the world country are two million people for one voter, this. Eh? That makes sense? The minute, all them type, type them stupid, so, anybody you come from, and I like, you're a idiot, you know? And them can't, okay, you have family members and friend.
Yeah, them can't check it, them can't check it, them can't check it, you know, them can't check it. But what I'm afraid, I, let me tell you what I'm afraid of, you see, the third-party business, that I'm afraid of, because this would be the diaspora, we have viable third party. Because if you have six mil, make us say you have five million people in the diaspora, right? And, and only a million are go vote, right? You know, that can't change the election, you know? One million voters, you know, can't change it completely. And them not want that, because once you start vote, then you can't say, hey, you know what, them now so our purpose, and so you know what we do? We need to farm a third party, a diaspora party, and put it down there. And, and make people, we can select people from the, the like where the, the, um, the, the, Mr. Patterson, Joseph Patterson, the one do with, um. With, um, UIC, where, where, remember, you said, when, when you ask him, no, them come up one time with local government, and they put up, they put up about.
Six.
About, I don't know, six, some people, I know, some say, loads of them say, I photoshop, I photoshop a people, and I put them in a uniform. And say, they not have six people down there, that's a party there, I photoshop, Photoshop, put on the uniform. Come on, come on, the man, him said to him, him said to him, um, him say, so. You, you, why, why you, you, you feel like candidate, so tell the people, when you have a run that, the man said, no, I'm not telling you. No, but if you not tell, how we are going to know who for vote for? The man said, I'm not telling you, then loads of them say, oh, we have a promote, oh, we have a promote. Give us a news, oh, come on.
But I know, but it, no, but Ratty, you have to know, we have.
But you see, they realize the problem, they realize the problem, because he wants to keep. Because he just vote the, we see this. So you don't know if this person was a profile, you don't know if this person was, you, you know nothing about this person, because they, they have to be vetted. So you cannot take his word for it that these people are horrible, and are worth the other person's vote, you need nothing, you need to promote them. So, you know, that is a problem that we are having, the system of corruption, that allows him to come now, you know? I am keeping close to my chest, like, the candidates who are going to run my party, like, I know which is that.
Mark, you know, let me tell you something, we don't want to go fight, and they were very strict, and I fight more and more and more, no. But you have to, but not nothing wrong with the party, you know, just who in the party, you know? And you have some, like, mad bit to steal, like, you have some party, like, criminal and criminal elements, like, for some party. And PSOJ, like, for some party, you have nothing back, because them can have quote, quote, and, and for them, they not going to jail. And them have a corrupted DPP, and nobody can move, no, she get moved now. She get moved now, you have to move her, she will go home a long time, you understand? She will go squat and calf, because when I make, she go over the chest with the thing them in a, you know, Ratty, and we can't find it, you know? She have to squat and calf, and she have to get used to it, because the creator home, we have to squat and calf.
You, you know them shadow, you know them shadow, them shadow? Here's what, you see, the moment the court said on Friday that, hey, you not have no job, right? Them should have, them should have, I wanted the DPP them have security, because what I'm sure do is just, make you come in. Uh, if she not the office, them just walk her out with her bag only, and say, we will pack up your stuff. Um, and the personal stuff, we'll send it to you, and the official stuff, we'll keep it, yeah. Hey, and that the FBI do not really know. And that, you see, once they make a decision, and you stung on your desk, and you are type, and them coming, you know, it's a two big neck man coming, you know? And them just say, um, take your bag, and then walk out of the building. And then when they go through your stuff, them go through your computer, them go through everything, and whatever is personal, them mail it to you, them mail it to you. And then keep.
When them, when them a move them way there, them use them big old thick, big.
Yeah, man, from big thick neck man come, and, because normally in the office, you know, remember, when them a walk up, people kind of the office. We never walk with a gun, because, you know, two, they said, we know one, them go say, right, no, anything, so, for, for reasons, we know, we know have a gun. And we know people in the office who not walk with a gun, but, so when you see them people, have on them jacket, and them gone, you know say, I walk, them a walk with somebody. And them just come, and they just come to the door, and them just say, um, where's your bag? And you show them the bag, they must go through the bag, and then them just say, all right, fine, um, come with us. And them leave your computer up, everything up, and then just walk you right out of the building, and just walk you through the door and say, bye. Because them not, them, them, them not come and tell you, well, you're leaving because you did this, and that, that's enough for them job. For them job is to just escort you out of the building. So when you say, what's going on, what them say, no, 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 you know, we, we're not allowed to talk to you, we don't know why, we were just told that we have to walk you out. And then just walk you right out of the building, and then, now I'm bridging, you know, I'm a bridging, me is working, you know? And the man, them fire him, and the man, them call me and say, listen, don't make him come, him get fired from home, in their home, and them say, don't make him come back in the office. And them said, go through all them things, and it was sad, because, and to this day, me and him are still, we're still bridging, and them said, just go through him personal stuff. Go through all them stuff, and it's, you, you mail off, send him off in, in personal stuff, and the stuff, we are our stuff, we keep it. And you know, so the man there, the man there, him, them tell me, come overseas, you know? For him coming at the embassy, and then put up him, like, wanted posters, you know, said, don't make this man come inside there, you know, unless him get escorted. And me, I forgot, you know, I'm take up the man, him, 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 you, him want go to the doctor. The doctor up on the first floor, we up on the third floor, right, and them say, when you bring him in? Because when, when you come at the gate, them look on them, say, oh, I him that, and them look on the post, and them, and me say, yeah, 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 everything is fine, them say, all right. But you know, you can't take him above the first floor, me said, no, and him no, and me carry him go, sit down outside of the doctor's office. Doctor take care him, him and him family, and me just, them just come back out, well, for put him back in the car, and carry him home. Him not allowed to go above the first floor.
So, even the doctor, him have got change, the doctor then, can't even come there, when I've escorted him, and stand up there.
Me, I, he cannot, he cannot come there unless him get escorted, cannot come there.
Just a Jamaica for run, man, that me I tell them, man, that me like, that sound good. Can he man take a escort straight, man, until I squat and calf, Ratty? You tell him squat and calf, not you.
So, so what should happen, to make sure, I should not take nothing, once the court rule, them should just say, come in, and they'll say, okay, all right, fine, boom, and take her out.
Can I see some of the, you know?
And secure the office space, that's what them should do.
Well, I said to you.
You can't make she go back inside there, you can't make she go, because who knows what go on right now?
I said some time, what she want this try?
Exactly, so who knows what happened between Friday and today, nobody don't know.
Yes. Yeah. No, yeah, somebody.
One of them there, I'm gonna tell them, you see, but him good, still, him good, him good, him good, him good, him good. Him get back him job.
Yeah, man, over the weekend, yeah, man, over the weekend, no, over the weekend, I don't think she can go office over the weekend.
But them have security, who are going to stop her? She have the key, she have the code, who are going to stop her?
Supposed to stop her, if she going to, she a criminal, remember, she a DPP, you know? She a, she a private citizen.
And that's supposed to take, that's supposed to happen from Friday, from the court ruling, and remember now, you know? It wasn't no secret, so the court that will rule Friday, everybody know that, that the court that will rule Friday, right? Even me did know that from the week before, it said the court that will rule Friday. So what I'm supposed to do is say, all right, you know what, if the court ruled that she's not DPP, we have to have something in place so that we walk her out. And she not touch none of the files then, because we don't know what might happen, that's what it's supposed to go.
Yeah, somebody, Sir Ratty, look what else I know this, so. Sir Ratty, with your sympathy and.
Your apology, personally.
You apologize?
No, 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 me not apologize, me just feel it inside, so sometimes me name say it, you know? Me not say it, but me just, you just feel it, um, it's all you treat people, you know, because you know what happened?
You treat people like you.
My mother always tell me, my mother always tell me, said, treat people the way you would like to be treated.
That true, that true.
And if me not in position, I mean, them all get rid of me, that's how I want them get rid of me.
Yeah. Ratty, a good human being, man. Me train about, me not take, not take from them, because, you see, when them do that, them a joke you with all pin and thing, because they, they not do some espionage things, so we can't, they call near me, you know? Remember, we get burnt, Ratty, remember, yeah, all right, so let me tell you why, me take a different stand, right? Remember, I say, me, 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 me dip on the road, you know? I read me, I'm a man, John, everything, I'm a drag up on the hill, come and dig up on the hill, same place, where you see them up there, building, you know, live up there. We just park outside this, I'm gonna do a little pool party, and think, I'm like, oh, we take, I want me come up back, I'ma turn down the hill, you know? I straight over a precipice, then cut my break, you know? I attempt murder, that, you know? Not, you know, you must say nothing, they look up here, but them, I'm a teacher, to my tongue, Ratty, it's a tree, it's a big tree, me fly, like me there on a hill in a Ratty. Like me there in a, in a space, a fries, a soup, but a good thing of the vista, me a drive. I, I zoom, and it just suck it round, I'd save my man.
No, you shall lucky, you shall lucky, because you shall lucky, you know, you, you not come out and come in suicide like some people.
Ah, that me I say, so now, you see them, ah, no, them, none of them not come up on me, you know, then, then take my backseat, remember, say, I'm a brother. So we go through too much thing, man, so, you know, make some boy come there, and me live in my wilderness. Remember, we go through it, you know, so, Ratty, you know, me understanding, but me, you know, you, you return a suspect on me, you know? Me not take check.
Bad girl Tiffy, you, you have the background check for me, yes, I am. But, but Mariel is it, she say, so, if she take the documents on the laptop, what will happen? Well, it's what happened to SSL, you know, so the laptop, them gone, and nobody know where the laptop them gone, right? So if she take them, who are go prove that she take them, and if she take them, you know, who knows what will happen? It, it shouldn't happen though, them should have somebody there for make sure, say, that, um, that, once the decision has been made. That she's no longer DPP, that you don't come back in the building, that's what should happen, she have no, and then change up the codes them too. Change up the code, change up the lock, change up everything. That's how you run that show there. Because you don't know, you don't know what, what can happen, when you trust people like that inside there. And then furthermore, remember, remember, people were saying, some people were saying, she's doing the government's bidding. So if she really was, then why would you allow her then for just come back in the office?
No, but you ever see a governmental run through, it does a work, you know, and you are, you want, can people go a quote, and, and, and appeal, for she? That not make no sense. You see, me I say? Yeah.
Take out the documents on the laptop, mm-mm. No, you not allow them inside there, mm-mm. Let me give an example, let me give an example, you remember the FBI director, right? The one, the, the.
Yeah, calling, calling, sees, and him, him get back, him get back, right?
All right, you, all right, you, you remember what I'm with Comey, Comey, I visit the LA office. And then back to the TV, and I give speech, and the man, I say, them see past CNN, same get fired, right, Trump fired.
Trump, one tweet, that, you know, or more.
Yeah, him, him in the other office, I give a speech, and he back, turn to the camera.
Yes.
And then the thing flash up there, because them, them, they, they muted, come and give a speech, and then put a scene on the box, FBI director fired, right? And then he hears them, he hears them run, call, them point out to him, say, watch it, look behind you. And then say, man, fire you, so them run, go in at the office, in the office, and make a call to Washington, and them say, yeah, man, you get fired. You saw them do with him though, him couldn't come back on the, on the, on the G five, you know, the FBI plane, you know?
That me I say.
He couldn't come back on that, I forget, he might have buy him own ticket, on another plane, and come back, and guess what, him couldn't go in the office. Him couldn't go in the office, so them just go in there, go through him stuff, and mail, mail him where he'm supposed to get. No, make him come back inside there and pack up, no, no.
It's, at somewhere, I think, in a Jamaica, different thing, you know, Ratty? Yeah, they can different, man.
That's, yeah, no, yeah, because every, every, like, every sensitive agency, I go have them own security team. For protection and things like this, when somebody gets fired, you walk them out, you don't make them linger, 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 and take things, no. No, so. Shredding machine, I work overtime right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, British are, no joke thing at all, not a joke thing, you know? So, also the things still.
Yeah, man. Anyway, people, we still time, you know, you know, say.
Simarone, you not have a simarone?
You know, you know what time it is, Ratty.
You not have it?
You know, so, Ratty, I like, I like eat, work.
You not have it, you not have it.
Eh?
The other night, no, you not have it, the other night, you not take up the plate and I show the whole.
That's, you see, me I say, yeah, me have go downstairs now, so. Yeah. Yeah, no, you have my time, I have go downstairs, Rocky.
Okay, so you're not king of the castle tonight?
Yeah, yeah, man, they're not, never can, can't you then, not three, what, then that, they have a warm up, something, now, now, I get something warm up, you know, so. Swim around, I have a warm up, so.
Well, me hungry like a dog, you know, because, you know, the last two days are one-time meeting, you know, from Friday night.
No, but we can't, I'm, I'm too rocky, be careful.
Yeah, we eat, you know, man, yeah.
Yeah, all right, go eat, man, Maria eat her dinner for early, you know?
Rice on pizza.
Rice on pizza, eh?
With, with, with carrot, with carrot on pizza.
Maria.
Woo!
Yeah, you must have general bad rice, you know, only me a customer, because, I'm not gonna sell you rice. General bad rice, come, me know eat rice on pizza, me know eat rice on ninety-two, you know? And that's all, like, some thirty-two years ago, no, Rocky.
Well, I don't know, you know, you know.
Yeah, yeah, there, rice on pizza, yeah, man, I have food, I gotta eat, man, I eat.
You'll be a friend of ours, because you have, you feel, you feel that your food digest.
Yeah, we, yeah, man, banana.
Because your food.
All right, so people, you wanna?
Don't worry about your food now, fast, but it just, that, just that, that was Kevin, from Friday night, it went from Saturday morning, and then, we finish up like around two, and then we start up again around nine, and then the program went till, what, eleven forty or something like that, the program went till. And then we never have enough time to eat, because then we have to start from twelve again till two, so. I mean, I have run out of the street last time, I get some junk food, but something I eat, not, until then, I eat nothing. Last time I eat, three o'clock this morning, three, four o'clock this morning, yeah.
Now, Sir Rocky, we have to eat some food, you know, people, we there, anyway, out.
Rest in peace.